All right, this council committee of the whole meeting dated November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four is called to our order at three forty-five. We have one open and one, well, I guess, two open and one closed item for this agenda. And it starts with budget. And it is the land and economic development budget. And it looks like Kevin Redden is here to present. Randy Buckner is here to present, so you are welcome. Oh, there you are, sorry. And Dennis, I guess if you want to give an intro.
Did you want to say something?
Good afternoon, members of council. There's a little bit of a repeat, but I do want to emphasize a few things. So our budget process includes four council committee of the whole meetings. And as a reminder, rate-based utilities, energy production, municipal, and the meeting today is land development and real estate and economic development. These committee meetings are intended to allow council to dig further into the details, to ask questions of staff in order to gain a full understanding in advance of formally deliberating and approving the budget, which will be presented to council on December second. The land development and real estate and economic development is the fourth and last deliberation session for this committee. At this point, departments have completed their base operating budgets, identified operational cost pressures, and proposed new initiatives, both operating and capital opportunities. The purpose of this afternoon is to seek alignment with council, and council has the opportunity to see how the city budget plans align with their strategic priorities. Administration will use the information gathered over these four series to inform the final budget package recommendations for council approval in December. This afternoon will include three distinct presentations. The two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six land development and real estate budget, which seeks to support land development, sales, and leasing activity anticipated in the current economic environment, including commentary of the land strategy anticipated in the second quarter two thousand and twenty-five. Number two, economic development will be providing a lens on the economic status of the community and complementary initiatives that relate to the city's land and real estate efforts. That includes the strategy, the two thousand and twenty-four achievements, and the future outlook. And then, thirdly, there'll be a short presentation relating to a recap of the of the four committee of the whole sessions with opportunity for council to further deliberate on the two thousand and fifty-six budget in advance of the December second council meeting.
Can I, so, we don't actually have the budget yet. So in terms of deliberation, I feel like we would need the budget first to deliberate on the budget.
Great question, Mayor Clark. What you have been presented is what is going to be in the budget. So related to capital, related to operating, related to new opportunities, related to assumptions. So what we've tried to do is to allow to dig deeper, is section it off into four elements. And that was the four elements that we had. So even today, when you look at land and real estate, you're going to see the budget that we proposed to include in the December second package. So I would offer that please take the opportunity to ask questions and deliberate and to seek to understand and and.
So what has been given to us in the council committee of the whole meetings is the level of detail that administration is planning to provide, like, that's the all the detail we're going to get for the budget, the line items, et cetera?
So Mayor Clark, what you're going to see on December second will be a presentation that will summarize what we've seen in the four committee meetings. That will also consolidate all four into one presentation.
But no further detail, like, like line items of the budget?
So the detail, Mayor Clark, is exactly what we presented here in the four meetings. And so it's not our intent to redo any of that on December second. It is it is merely a presentation to reflect what we've looked at here, and we've had an opportunity to do a deeper dive, so.
But you would agree this is less detailed financial information that we than we received, like, last year, for example, or the year before?
So I know that we had some deliberations in previous years, and they've all looked differently. In my mind, this is by far the most comprehensive that I've seen since since I've been here. I think it's a wonderful process that allows council to focus on a particular area and dig deeper. If there's any information that council further requests or is looking for, we can certainly provide some insight into that.
Yes, I would like to see the line items of the budget, like, the entire budget is what I would like to see, so thank you. So go go ahead.
Okay, as mentioned before, the city's budget is one of the most important tasks that both the city and administration will undertake. The process is lengthy, over a period of several months, with many inputs and considerations, including ensuring that the city is advancing the council's strategic priorities while remaining fiscally sustainable. And the tagline that we've used all along is to balance the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. I do want to acknowledge the great work done by city staff in preparing this budget, including tonight, the presentation and related reference materials. They are the experts that are involved in the day-to-day delivery of services in this community, and they're available here tonight for discussion during the presentation. So with that, those are my introductory comments. What I would like to do now is introduce Randy Buckner. Randy is the manager for land and real estate, and Randy will take us through the presentation for this particular item. Randy?
Before you get started, we have Counselor Sharps and Counselor Conodle online. If we could get the team's screen for a second. Counselor Sharps and Counselor Conodle, can you turn on your, I, thank you, Counselor Sharps, Counselor Conodle, can you please turn on your video camera so we can confirm your identity per the procedure bylaw? Okay, great, thank you very much. Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, your worship, council, executive, and those in the gallery. My name is Randy Buckner. I'm the manager of land and real estate with the Environment, Land, and Gas Production Department. I'm pleased to be here this afternoon to continue the budget deliberations and the presentation to be a part of your final session alongside economic development. I'm also joined by Kevin Redden, our Director of Environment, Land, and Gas Production, who's in the gallery for any questions. So today's presentation for land development and real estate is different from some of the other presentations you will have seen. As noted in other sessions, our budget is one piece of the pie. However, you will note that our proposed budget this year is status quo, recognizing the work that we have underway to ensure future budgetary decisions, and that these are rooted in facts, data, and in alignment with strategic priorities. So the land development and real estate budget has no new operating initiatives, cost pressures, or capital asks. This is intentional, and I'll walk through the why today. A reset and strategy is well underway to understand our next steps in doing our part towards financial sustainability. So our focus today is to paint a broader picture of where we are currently and glean some feedback from council on the steps that we've taken so far and where we are headed. The department had one growth capital ask as well, however, this item has been deferred. Today, we will walk through our budget at a very high level, and that takes place at the end. But the focus of the presentation is to highlight the bigger picture and is an opportunity for a check-in with council to ensure that we're headed down the right path. So today, our presentation is three parts. I'm going to be spending some time just reintroducing our Department of Land and Real Estate and the work that we have underway, walk through some initial findings from the land strategy, and then welcome a discussion on revisiting our mandate to inform how we move forward. There's also a few breaks throughout the presentation, if there's any questions, but feel free to stop me if anything comes up. So this is a slide that you're going to see at the beginning of our presentation as well as at the end, and I wanted to introduce this early on so that as we go through today's materials, this is kept in the back of your minds, and it will help frame up our discussion at the end. So in our department, a question that often arises, both with other departments and with our stakeholders, is what is the success of a land transaction? And this seems simple, sell the land, or in some circumstances, it's buying the land. However, as we go through our presentation today, we'll share examples and nuances that showcase how we move about this spectrum and where there are influences that start to pull us from our traditional profit center mandate towards that of a policy-driven value or greater social value, as well as the contrasting influences of nimbleness and navigating a transaction in a municipal structure, and then balancing community expectations, needs, and a return on investment. So this discussion at the end will assist our department in understanding a refresh mandate, and it's also a check-in and feedback of the role of land development and real estate. So the first part of our presentation, I'll take a few moments just to reintroduce our land and real estate department. So the focus of land and real estate is on effective land management. The department resides within Environment, Land, and Gas Production, recognizing the close ties to environmental stewardship and ongoing obligations of the gas production assets that require land support. Our own team has two complementary sides, one that is focused on supporting the land and real estate inventory, and then the other providing surface land administration. As a step towards efficient service provisions, last year, these two separate land functions were combined into one streamlined department with resources and costs. The land portfolio has also experienced quite a few transitions in recent years, and we are rebuilding. So our team is small and we're newly formed, but we're quickly becoming well-versed with a strategic asset, bringing a lot of experience from the private industry, the city itself, and then using this to support the organization and other departments. Today, I wanted to highlight the city's land portfolio as a strategic asset. The city has a healthy land bank and is well-positioned to meet future growth and community needs. This aligns well with council's strategic priorities, remaining open and ready for investment attraction, filling gaps in the market for intensification and redevelopment, and gives our community a competitive advantage. This also ensures our ability to meet the short-term and long-term goals and vision of the municipal development plan. There's a long history related to city-owned land. This includes our role as a landowner, a property manager, and a developer. So since the nineteen thirty's, the city planned for growth needs of our community, acquiring and annexing a healthy land bank. Today, the city is one of the largest landholders in the municipal boundaries. As a property manager, the city has acquired land for key infrastructure projects, and an example that's shown on the slide here is the Allowance Avenue Overpass. We've also acquired properties that were impacted by the two thousand and thirteen floods, and this was in order to create infill opportunities and redevelopment within the river flats. So this role has been essential in creating the fabric of the community that we know today. The city is also a longstanding land developer, since at least the nineteen eighty's, providing industrial, commercial, and residential developments. The city was once considered a leader in land development, but has a much lesser share of the greenfield market today, approximately twenty percent. Being held to the same standard, and often even a higher standard, as any private development, the city similarly shares many of the same risks as private development. Being influenced by the market, growth of the community, being a land developer in a municipal structure may come with some of its challenges, as we cannot move with the same ease as private industry, navigating influences from the community and the municipal structure, being viewed as one and the same as other departments within the organization. The city has, though, also seen many advantages by being a land developer, where we've been able to remain ready to meet growth needs through various developments and advanced city-led area structure plans should the market require them. So land development?
Counselor Robbins has a question.
Sure.
Thank you, and through the chair, Manager Buckner, thank you. I'm very glad to hear that we have a healthy land bank, and obviously, there was councils and city administration well before you or I who made that happen. But I'm just curious to know, what is the impact on a community that doesn't have that healthy land bank? Can you just speak to that a little bit? I would think that it would make growth development much more complicated, but I just wonder if you could highlight a little bit of that.
Through the chair to Counselor Robbins, it's a great question. With other communities that don't have such a healthy land bank, they can be limited in the growth, or they're at the whim of private developers, and their their decisions to make new residential developments or commercial developments available. So with this and the healthy land bank that the city has, it does provide a lot of flexibility to meet our growth needs, but also remain really adaptable to what the community needs when it comes to both commercial and industrial opportunities as well. So land development in Medicine Hat is a long game. This goes for private and city. So somewhat dissimilar to other commodity-based business units, there is further benefit to the land asset, such as providing for long-term and sustaining tax-based growth, filling gaps in the market, and then investment readiness and the ability to seek the return on investment. Development areas in Medicine Hat have fluctuated in their timelines to build out. In some areas, this has taken ten to fifteen years. The city completed the Samus Heights development in two thousand and sixteen, final phases of Southlands in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen, and then Ranchlands in two thousand and nine. Since then, land values have remained relatively flat, with inventories still remaining for sale today. So these examples reflect a relatively modest market with a return on investment being drawn out and dependent on many factors. Over time and considering, though, changes in policy, the land department has still been able to provide dividends back to the city totaling approximately twenty-seven million since two thousand and eight. This is financially-supported projects like the Big Marble Go Center, then known as the Family Leisure Center. So as a strategic asset, although benefits may be influenced by the market, there remains that broader value in the land, as noted in this slide. A modest market means, as we forecast into the future, we are doing so cautiously and carefully, considering our next steps. This look back over time also showcases the need for a strategy based on the current data and facts, providing guidance in future land development decisions. So the city's land bank is shown here, it totals approximately five thousand acres of greenfield and infill land. The city also has approximately four thousand surface leases and freehold land outside of the corporate limits within Alberta and Saskatchewan that's tied to the natural gas business unit. So these vast holdings and some of these very unique properties well-situate the city to remain adaptable to future needs and opportunities. The land inventory is managed through a few different uses. This includes interim uses, our actively listed opportunities that are for sale, as well as mid-to-long-term development areas alongside land that's held for municipal purposes and needs. So our land and real estate department manages approximately one hundred and fifty leases and provides interim revenues to the city on some of the longer-term land holdings. This also provides community uses to nonprofit organizations and other short-term needs like lay-down sites for construction projects. Our listed inventory includes low-density residential multifamily commercial properties, and as noted, is is in the Samus Heights, Southlands, and Ranchland subdivisions, which, again, were brought to market between two thousand and nine to two thousand and sixteen, with lots still available today. We also hold hold land for future urban development, such as Ranchlands Three C, Briar Run, and then the Northwest Industrial Park, which have advanced to the area structure plan phases, and future lands such as Burnside and Westview with that are in various stages of readiness to meet growth or market demand well into the future. So given these large land holdings, we need to ensure there's alignment with the lands and where we're growing, to ensure that there's also financial sustainability. We also need to understand if the city is to pursue these opportunities or perhaps make them available to private industry. Essentially, do we have the right land in the right locations, or perhaps these holdings could be better utilized? So as mentioned, there's been quite a few transitions with the land inventory, but I did want to take a moment to focus on some of the wins that we've had over the past year. So our team has started with completing a real estate gap analysis to understand the market, and as well as starting on an underutilized land analysis that I'll go into more detail in the coming slides. Our team has increased residential lot sales in the areas of Samus Seven, Southlands, and Ranchlands, and if anyone's had the opportunity to drive through Samus Seven as of late, there are a lot of new homes that are well underway. So last year, the department took back fifty-six lots, and however, we've been able to work with builders to take on multiple builds, and as of today, we have twenty-six of these fifty-six secured by six different builders. So this is fantastic for the area and diversifying housing supply, as well as supporting the the building community. The team also brought forward a new infill multifamily opportunity, Eight Forty-Nine Second Street, and secured a purchase agreement for a multifamily development. We've also brought forward for sale the former A Park Building, and we continue to make connections to leverage our existing inventory that we have available today. We've also completed a review of our agricultural leases, and we were able to bring them into alignment with market values that increase revenues by about a hundred thousand annually, and work still continues. Our team has also worked with community engagement and marketing to refresh all of our marketing materials, the land website, and kicked off a campaign to focus on commercial lands at the airport and multifamily opportunities to an audience outside of our local area. We've had a lot of opportunity also to work with Habitat for Humanity to bring forward a reduced lot sale to support their housing initiative, as well as facilitated a land donation for community housing for a multi-unit housing project. We continue to collaborate with economic development, and through those efforts have listed all of our available land on the Alberta Regional Dashboard and Site Selector Tool, and this focuses on providing investors, looking at Alberta with an easy way to see what areas of the province can accommodate their projects. And we've also started some work on reviewing our policies. The other complementary side of our department is the Surface Land Administration Team. They continue to provide support to the utility and gas production departments. This team provides third-party crossing and proximity agreements, supports crown disposition renewals, and ongoing support for reclamation certificates. They have a heavy volume of day-to-day work that collaborates and supports across the organization to meet legislative and regulatory requirements near critical city-owned infrastructure. I also wanted to take a moment to recognize the work we do with others across the organization as we deliver on our role as a landowner, a property manager, and a developer. So we are able to respond to opportunities with project-focused teams and work collaboratively on a variety of initiatives. Externally, we've also reestablished relationships with local stakeholders, including the Medicine Hat Real Estate Board, the Medicine Hat Chamber UDI, Build Community Housing, and many of the other local developers and builders. These groups are able to share their perspectives on both the opportunities and challenges with land so that we can work towards continuous improvement. I also wanted to touch on the role of council as it relates to land and real estate and a land transaction. So transactions by a municipality for transferring an estate or land are governed through the MGA through various different sections, and that's reflected in our current policy. The city has two policies that guide how we complete transactions and leasing, so that's the acquisition and sales policy, and then the lease and licensing policy. The acquisition and sales policy outlines council involvement when it comes to approving a transaction at council's signing authority, but it also allows for council to determine the list price and the sale strategy for any land or real estate that the city chooses to sell. So the value of this transaction could range from a dollar to a thousand or to a million or more. And again, I wanted to note that any land or real estate that the the city chooses to sell is brought forward to council for that decision of bringing it to the market. So these policies are from two thousand and fourteen, and our focus at present is to ensure that every step that we're taking is in alignment with them. However, we also acknowledge there's a need to update and refresh and ensure that decision-making is aligned with the appropriate level, and also provide the ability to be nimble to the market and be flexible where appropriate, given the many moving pieces that have to come together for a successful land transaction. So as a bit of a recap, before we move on to the next section, land is a strategic asset for the city. There continues to be advantages to holding a healthy land bank, and then land development in a modest market is the long game. However, there are broader benefits to having this asset, and our team is focused on a reset but with a forward-looking strategy front of mind. So at this time, I will pause and see if there was any questions on this material, but I'll note we have about two-thirds of the presentation left, and we'll be getting into the land strategy as well as the discussion on the mandate.
Counselor Dumanowski?
Just quickly, excuse me, Manager Buckner, earlier in this slide deck, you talked about twenty percent of the greenfield market is owned by us. So that's, I don't know what the upside was over my time here, but it certainly was higher. And I know the measured response from private sector and others has been the city owned too much of the development, so not here to argue for or against it, but twenty percent seems certainly surprises me as quite low. I did look at the the swings that you indicated on that slide, so that could be part of it, but can you generalize, generally speaking, or generalize why we are at twenty percent? Was that, is that a strategic goal of ours, or has it been? I'll just throw it out there for the sake of. Or has it been, I'll just throw it out there for the sake of conversation. Are we, is our development or our land holdings no longer in alignment or congruent with where developers want to go? Or are they finding other opportunities? Is there a high-level piece that you could respond to? Thanks.
Through the Chair to Councillor Dumanowski, I think there's a few different influences on that. So when I, when I speak to the the greenfield market of of that's available today, talking about active subdivisions. So this would be the ones that we have available being Samus 7, Southlands, and Ranchlands. And then we're also comparing them to privately-held developments that are available today. And those may be things like the phases of Hamptons or Cooley Ridge. At this time, there hasn't been any necessarily strategic direction to to slow down that. But it is also understanding that development, as I mentioned, is a is a long game. And so seeing that return on investment over ten to fifteen years where we still do have lots for sale, that has also slowed, I think, the city's progress in advancing some of these other phases until we've kind of caught up and understand of, and this will actually be a discussion later on in our presentation, of what is the role that we're playing within this? Are we leading the land development, or are we complementing? Are we competition, or are we there to to support? So that's something that's probably worth exploration and something we want to get into with the land strategy as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Hirsch?
Well, I guess the back part of the of the answer, I guess, is maybe maybe my question as well. We we talk about Samus 7, which was something that was city-developed and then flipped to the private, and I think we ended up getting it back. I appreciate that we're kind of moving ahead and and probably halfway through on the sales of that, which is good. But I guess, so is is staff having suggestions in terms of, because I looked now, obviously, we're in a bit of a shortage. I see seventy-three lots available. I remember we were, years ago, we were in the neighborhood of two to three hundred in inventory lots. So obviously, for us right now, it's low. So I guess I'm wondering, and and I read obviously the the packet. So is there a position that staff's going to take in recommendation to council? Or are you looking for feedback from us to you?
Through the Chair to Councillor Hirsch. When we look to at the the current available inventory of residential, that includes both the privately-held lots that are for sale as well as those within the city. And in this time, there has been a few private developments coming forward and bringing new lots available, which is kind of offsetting, I think, the need for the city to have two hundred or three hundred lots available where those private developments weren't there at that time. The feedback today, and we'll get further along into this when we speak about mandate, this is the type of feedback that we're we're seeking for is the city, what role do we play within residential development? Are we, again, leading, leading within that? Is it to fill a community need, or is it to seek a return on investment? And as we'll get into when we talk about development being a long game, those perhaps may be two different things. When we look at the economics behind our subdivisions and how long it has taken to see that return on investment, that's a different decision than us doing it maybe to fill a gap in the market.
So, and I appreciate that, and I, why I led with Samus 7 is that I guess I'm a, my my question, which I don't know if you're going to be able to answer, is because we had Samus 7, and it turned out to be not the best decision in terms of the smaller lots, we kind of know the history of that. I guess what I'm wondering, as far as a mandate goes, and I have every belief that, I I guess I'm wondering about the bench strength for us to say, from you guys to say as staff, no, we can take on a developer role. We've got this person who's skilled at this, and or is it merely the bench strength's not there? Like, I'd I'd like to kind of know that as far as, I just don't want to repeat a Samus 7, to be honest. I think what ended up happening is that we had some well-intentioned people that maybe had an ideological pursuit of smaller lots and ergo, et cetera. Again, not to rip that bandaid off, but for me, I would, being in the development business means you need to understand the market. And if the market is saying, this is the type of lot I want, then I think as developers, we would probably act the same way. But I guess that's the question for council you're proposing. I get it. But maybe throughout the presentation, for me to understand, I don't know the bench strength of the team that says we are more than capable to be developers. You just have to give us the go-ahead because we've got this, this, and this. Or quite frankly, we're not really in the shape of developers per se, but we could be landowners, we can do the, we can do the initial sale to a developer in the future. So that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Through the Chair to Councillor Hirsch. Where we're at, I think, as a department, is is trying to understand the market and then that role. By all means, if we were feeling that the market was leading that and there was a place for us to be advancing on some of these areas, we'd be ready to do so. I think with, the city has advanced a lot of the area structure plans to a place where those could be taken on very quickly with next steps if the market was demanding. And that has really been the the indicator that we've been looking for is where within the market does it make sense for the city to pursue this? And then why are we pursuing it? If we're pursuing it for a return on investment, being that we are a profit center at current, and that's our mandate, we've seen that this hasn't yet been the opportunity to do that for that, for that case. But if we're doing it because we feel that as a community we need to have three hundred residential lots available at all times, that maybe, that might look different when it comes to us being then that core profit center. Given the fact that, looking back over time, the ten to fifteen years to to build out some of these areas really is that long game. So if the community demand is there and the market demand is there, that we would be actioning on on some of these residential developments right away.
So with with seventy-five combined, is that not indicative that we're short? Or do you feel? Like, I just, I'm just trying to understand the trending. Like, we're down to seventy-five, and and a lot of people I talked to said, you know, we we feel like there is, as as a result, housing has gone up. I understand, we can't control the spec market and developer market. I just feel like in my, and that doesn't necessarily mean we lead by example, but maybe we make land available for developers, that sort of thing. And I guess that's what your discussion is all about. But is it your position, or you're feeling like seventy-five is light?
Through the Chair to Councillor Hirsch, and I appreciate this as as even feedback to into our discussion later. I think it is also looking at, again, we're not the only developer that's holding residential lots. I think between some of the other privately-owned, two are at seventy-five, and that seventy-five is also lesser because we have secured some sales as well recently. There are still approximately three hundred in some residential lots available within the community through Cooley Ridge and through Hamptons. And so it's also trying to understand too, what role and balance do we play? Us bringing on new residential lots onto the market. We also want to be cognizant of not flooding the market because that won't be perceived to be good either. So we really are taking those market indicators. And when it is, when that leads us to being, we need to be bringing up new residential, we would be ready to do so.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to proceed on to kind of the second part of our presentation today. So as we discussed, our, the city's large land bank has given back to the community in many ways. And it poses a lot of opportunity for the future. But the long game of land development in a modest market signifies the importance of our next steps and how we carefully need to consider how best to use the land. So daily, we hear in the news of the national influences of the housing market, interest rates, rents, immigration. But we need to understand how these influences impact our own community, given our current state, population growth, housing data, and development trends, to ensure that we're putting this valuable resource to the best use and ultimately making good investment decisions for the community. So to understand the foundation of a land strategy, our first step was the completion of a real estate gap analysis. So this is built on population modeling. It's important to recognize that this data is a snapshot in time and will need to be updated as new information becomes available through future census. So in September of this year, the province published updated population forecasting for Alberta, highlighting the expected natural growth and growth related to migration across the province for different sub-provincial areas, and that's shown here. The most likely scenario was a medium-growth scenario for the sub-provincial areas. So Medicine Hat falls within an area that's forecasted to experience between point one and point five percent growth annually. This population update quotes that there is significant regional variation in projected population growths, and that the most robust growth is expected to be concentrated in regions with or surrounding large urban centers and between the corridors between Calgary and Edmonton. So other municipalities like that of Calgary and even Lethbridge are forecasted to experience higher growth rates. We've all seen the 2021 census data that notes that Medicine Hat grew by eleven people. So while this is just one data point, and again, a snapshot in time, the importance of this is to recognize that their regional growth numbers remained lower than past projected rates. And in some areas, were observed to be negative. So this begins to show our regionals, our regionals dissimilar trends to other regions across the province and is reflected in modest growth that we're experiencing locally. So looking back at previous population forecasts from at least two thousand, or two thousand and three, with each iteration the city has completed, the next projection has scaled back our projected growth. So from two thousand and three to now, we have yet to meet or exceed the projected growth rates. This is not intended to paint a pessimistic outlook, but just to be eyes wide open to our current state so that we can make informed decisions as it relates to land development and to real estate. So as part of our initial work, we obtained a third-party consultant, Colliers, to complete an updated population model and forecast. And based on this model, and then also taking into consideration models past, the recommendation led to the most likely scenario for growth being a medium-growth scenario at point five percent growth annually. So this foundational understanding of how our community may grow is in alignment with the recent modeling that the province completed and demonstrates that we are experiencing somewhat dissimilar trends to other areas of the province in Canada. Our decisions and our forward-looking strategy need to be rooted in an understanding of what this means for our community when it comes to decisions the city's making on our city-owned residential, commercial, and industrial lands, and how they can be best used, or how are we proceeding with that type of development? So with these projections in mind, our real estate gap analysis dug into the supply and demand of the residential, commercial, and industrial lands. And I'm going to share some high-level findings for each of these today. The work that Colliers did does go much deeper than what I'm sharing today. They explored data related not only to population, but demographics, immigration trends, our existing inventory, sales trends, housing trends, and preferences, as well as permits. They also looked at other jurisdictions in our province and those neighboring. So in these slides, the year 2046 is used as a projection limit. This aligns with the census year over a twenty-year period. And these findings are not final, or intended to be the final output of a land strategy. But these are themes that we wanted to start to introduce as they begin to frame up our key assumptions as we build out actions for a strategy and understand the role our department plays. So the residential analysis considered over the next approximately twenty years, changes in Medicine Hat's population coupled with variations in housing construction trends. It noted that this will dictate the potential gap between our housing supply and our demand. So this estimated gap ranges from a surplus of approximately sixteen hundred units to a deficit of approximately five thousand units by 2046. And this is assuming that construction patterns, patterns continue as they are today, introducing supply at the same rate. Then the anticipated gap based on that population growth is approximately eight hundred and seventy-eight units. So this gap is quite modest, and it could be accommodated on seventy acres of land if it was all single-family. So given this modest gap, we need to carefully consider where this should be filled. Is this through greenfield or through infill opportunities? So Medicine Hat in the last ten years has also had a relatively stagnant supply of rental units, with little new projects entering the market. This has created pressures and record-low vacancies while the rental market continues to increase in line with comparable communities. So given our modest market and the introduction of new rental units in the coming year, this could also relieve some of these pressures. And this also indicates how the development patterns in Medicine Hat may look different than that of other communities. So as noted earlier, there are many topics that receive national attention, and affordability is one of them. So this topic is complex and delicate. And in comparison, in comparing Medicine Hat to other jurisdictions, it's estimated that nineteen point five percent of Medicine Hat residents spend over thirty percent of their income on shelter costs. And this is the delineating threshold by CMHC to measure housing affordability. So this percentage is lower than other Alberta municipalities, including Lethbridge, Red Deer, Calgary, and Edmonton, but is comparable to that of Regina. So again, this is highlighting that this is one data point and a snapshot in time, and that we will need to update this information when new census data becomes available. And then the final point was that in Medicine Hat, the predominant housing type is single-family detached, and trends suggest that this is likely to continue. So this is important for us to understand how we look back at our existing inventory, and then how we approach new development and efforts to diversify housing. The assessment also looked at commercial findings for both office space and retail space. It was identified in the review that there is an oversupply of all retail space at present. And this can be seen within the community with numerous spaces being available for lease. So in the near term, the space needs for retail opportunities can be met by our existing supply. Looking further into the future, and by 2046, there was projected to be a gap of retail. However, this could be accommodated through three hundred acres of greenfield land or through redevelopment. Office space was also similarly oversupplied. However, it's estimated that this oversupply is to persist. As Medicine Hat has a relatively older office space supply in areas like the Downtown Core and that would, that pose opportunity for reuse. Colliers also noted that there's a gap in a demand likely for a grocery retailer within the community with a focus on the north side of the city. So a key takeaway in this review was to consider when introducing new commercial opportunities that this can also take away from existing areas like the Downtown Core, as this area was identified as as experiencing the higher vacancies than other sectors within the community. And then further examples can be seen within our community of the oversupply as an example of a a car dealership who may build a new building within a greenfield area. They vacate their space, and then that vacated space remains that way for a longer period of time until it's redeveloped or reused. And then finally, for industrial lands. So it was identified that there is a shorter-term need for industrial lands, as there is a risk of undersupply. So industrial development is also diverse and complex, and the land to support this should remain flexible and adaptable. The build-it-and-they-will-come approach is very challenging and costly, and perhaps better balanced through incremental steps that align with the economic development strategies. So by 2046, it was identified that there is likely a need of an additional thousand acres of industrial lands, and that the need for these, there's a need for these to remain open to market demands and industrial uses. So as a quick recap, as we look back at these very high-level findings from the real estate gap analysis, it indicates that there's a modest modest gap for residential in the in the supply and demand, that we need to carefully consider where this should go. It also identified that the commercial spaces face an oversupply at current for both office and retail, with office oversupply persisting in the long term. And then it was also identified that in the near term, there's likely the need for industrial lands, and that these must remain flexible and adaptable. So while there's a place for new greenfield development, an important tie to the land strategy is also based on council's strategic priority of a brownfield redevelopment strategy. So while some lands in Medicine Hat meet the definition of brownfield, such as lands that have previous industrial uses, many sites may be perceived to be brownfield but are actually just underutilized lands without contamination of the land itself. So the intent of this work was to broaden the scope of brownfields to underutilized land. This considers both lands with contamination considerations, but also those that don't. And this includes areas like parking lots in the downtown, but also the former arena site. So the focus of this analysis was to better understand the trends and themes that are present within Medicine Hat and the lands that have the potential to be redeveloped or reused. So it doesn't necessarily mean that these lands will be, but a deeper look into what is available in our community to work with. So as part of this review, we worked with Colliers to identify through a screening process parcels that met criteria for lot size, site coverage, current use, vacancy, and then had limited redevelopment barriers such as slopes and floodways. And they identified approximately two hundred and sixty unique underutilized parcels, both city and privately-owned, that met this criteria. This also allowed for the beginning of a visual look at trends in location and allows us to build on work that has been completed in previous years for brownfield sites specifically, that looked at best practices and incentives, and then the legalities. So this assessment will provide an overview of other jurisdiction strategies pulling from similar work completed in communities such as Red Deer and Regina that have experienced similar scales of community change. The output of this will look at what is needed to reinvest into underutilized lands, and then how these lands can fill gaps in the findings that we went over today as it relates to residential, commercial, and industrial needs. So this work will allow us to understand barriers and opportunities for redevelopment, including programs, policy changes, best practices, incentives, and then also what is the city's role within this. So this work is still underway and being built out, but will be incorporated into a final land strategy. As part of our work, we also did some initial market sounding. And this was done with our local community, as well as through Colliers to developers outside of Medicine Hat and in the Calgary region to get an and in the Calgary region to get an outside perspective. So themes that were identified within our local market sounding were categorized as shown here. So locally, opportunities were highlighted in marketing the lifestyle of Medicine Hat, as well as the acre food corridor and educational programs. Challenges seen were regional access, the health of the retail market, regulatory approvals, and then demographic deterrence. And then construction considerations were brought to light through rising costs, lack of competition, and then decreased speculative development. Externally, themes emerged in discussions around benefits of redevelopment, the barriers they may face, and then tools and incentives that could be considered. So sustainability and economical growth were highlighted to be the most important to the external market. The barriers to shifting into redevelopment opportunities were related to increasing the financial performance of a project. So they provided thoughts on ways to improve redevelopment from streamlining approval processes to strategically preparing and prioritizing lands, and then creating incentivization programs that reduce risks to developers. So this information overall helps paint a broader picture of further considerations to a modest market, and how to carefully also consider where this modest gap can be filled, as well as it complements the work that's well underway by the economic development team and planning and development. So given these initial findings and more work to come, a final strategy is planned to be brought forward in Q2 of 2025. And this is where we would be outlining actions related to where are we, where are we going next? What development are we looking to take on, and is that greenfield or infill? These actions of the strategy will also include efforts to align our existing capital budget and update our policies. So just quickly as a recap, underutilized lands is broadening the review from the original brownfield redevelopment strategy that we have received feedback from our local market that have provided insights from a broader market base outside of the area for a fresh perspective. And then we're working towards that overarching land strategy to be brought forward to council in Q2 of 2025 as information. So we're almost at the end. The final part of our presentation is the discussion on revisiting our mandate. So I'm going to take us back to the very beginning of where we started today, where we introduced land as a strategic asset. We looked at our land inventory and how it poses a lot of advantages, but also noting that land development has been a long game in a modest market. So this also presents, and this also presents broader community benefits. We then discussed some of the initial findings of the real estate gap analysis of a modest residential market and gap, and oversupply of commercial space, and then the shorter-term needs of industrial lands. So when we start to overlap this information to create a strategy, these components are to feed into our mandate. Which brings us back to one of the first slides that we went over. So as a landowner and a property manager and a developer, and as we evaluate our budget now and into the future, we find ourselves asking what is the success of a land transaction? So our mandate has been historically centered around functioning as a profit center, but we do also provide support to departments, nonprofits, and filling gaps in community needs. So I'm going to share a few examples of where we fall in the spectrum when taking into consideration financial sustainability into the future. So traditionally, as a land developer, we've intentionally fallen on the right side of the spectrum where financial value is prioritized. Money has been invested with the expectation of a return. However, given the long game of development, the modest market, and the market that we are currently experiencing, in making business decisions to undertake new development, success is seen as a return on investment and a budget reflecting increased revenues. As a landowner, we receive requests from nonprofit groups seeking land donations or requests to fill gaps in the market at reduced sales prices. Given that we are a profit center, that land development is kept whole. This also includes a transfer of funds from reserves. So success may instead be supporting a nonprofit group or filling gaps in the market that fit a social or strategic need. The financial sustainability of this could look very different than that of the traditional profit center. And then finally, as a property manager, we will always have land, and there will always be a need to maintain that land with an appropriate operating budget, similar to other tax-supported assets. But as local government, there's always the option to use that land to meet a social or strategic need. However, that currently leans us further away from our current profit center focus. So in exploring what the success of a land transaction is, we find ourselves asking a few questions that I'm going to pose today for thought. So is it a one-time revenue that's reflected in the land budget? Is it the long-term and sustaining increases to the tax base? Is it ensuring the highest and best use of the land and holding this asset until there's certainty that that can be achieved? As a developer, are we driving or are we complementing the market? And then how best do we engage with the community? And how best is this information used to garner a one-time revenue or meet a social need or increase the tax base? And perhaps it's simply case by case. So as we revisit our mandate and move forward on a land strategy, we're asking ourselves and that of council, is how best do we use the strategic asset? Do we remain on the spectrum rooted in a profit center mandate? Or is there more policy-driven value to consider on a case-by-case basis? So considering all of the material that we've covered today, about the land inventory, our department, our initial findings, and then that forthcoming land strategy, while keeping front of mind financial sustainability, we are posing the question of what in council's view is the success of a land transaction, and are we headed down the right path? So with that, I do have two quick slides that are related to the actual budget, and then we can open it up for any questions. So this slide has been updated from the version that was in the agenda packet, where the net internal charges were not properly pulling in. So this has now been accounted for and changed within the version that you're seeing here. So as noted, our operating budget remains relatively the same this budget cycle, and that's due to all the work that we have underway as we decide what next steps we're taking. So there's no new cost pressures or operating initiatives. But an important item that I wanted to note for our operating budget is the factors that influence the gross profits, shown here. So this is greatly impacted by what actual piece of land is sold. Some land has greater costs of sales, or costs that have gone into the development itself than some of the other parcels. So we forecasted out expected revenues over '25 and '26 based on sales trends over the last 10 years and information collected by work within the real estate gap analysis. But it's also important to recognize that due to the counting of these numbers, that these can fluctuate greatly depending on what actually sells and what actually is developed. And then quickly, my final slide is just our noting that we had no new capital asks, but we are sharing just as information the deferred initiative, which was tied to the implementation of underutilized land analysis. And it was also in the spirit of furthering the initiatives that were originally identified as part of the city's Housing Accelerator Fund, but this item has been deferred.
Sorry. Can you explain that a little bit more?
This was an item that was on our list of capital, growth capital asks, as part of our overall land budget, but it has been deferred outside of the budget cycle.
That's our decision, right? And this is kind of what I mean about like, all the different things. We, I asked City Manager Mitchell quite some time ago about what projects and programs we actually, actually exist. What are we doing right now? And, because some of that you may be able to get rid of in favor of things that are more important. So this is really, I would say, a council decision, what we are going to spend money on. So that's the kind of thing, and I, like City Manager Mitchell, when I asked the question, replied that we would be getting that in the budget, like what is the listing of programs and, and services that we are currently providing? Yes, you can respond, City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you, and I think you're through the chair. I would ask respectfully that you clarify what you're asking, because you're putting an information out in the public that may not be accurate. We are in the process of a service delivery review, and that is something that will be coming next week to council. The specific key performance indicators. So I would ask that you not say that you've requested things that you haven't been given.
Well, I have asked for it, and I am asking for it, I guess. That was something that I think has come up a couple of times, even in, in past budgets. Counselor Robbins.
Yes, thank you through the chair. I just have three questions about the prior slide. Oh, yeah, that one. Thank you. So first, I had a question that, that the Medicine Hat Community Housing Association donation, is, is that like, loss of revenue or cost of sales? I'm guessing that it's not in the revenue, but I just want to be sure I'm right about that.
Through the chair, to Counselor Robbins, that's a great question. So the way that this works within our operating budget is the revenue does show because there was a transfer from capital, and there has, there is also a cost of goods that could be related to that parcel that would also be accounted to within our budget itself.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, in 2025, I see the cost of sales is higher than it is in 2026. So why, I'm thinking that might be about de-risking some land, but if I'm wrong about that, please tell me why that might be.
Through the chair to Counselor Robbins. With each piece of land that we have, there, the cost of sales or the cost of development that's gone into it fluctuates. So depending on which actual parcels we were forecasting that we think we're going to sell, that's what shows up within this. So some land, say the land near the airport, may have more cost of goods or a higher cost of goods than us selling 849 Second Street. That is then reflected within the budget. So it is really dependent on the actual land that we're selling, or the land that we're forecasting that we think we're going to sell.
Right, so when you talked earlier about the projections through the work that you've done, that's okay. And my last question is, other revenue or expenses in brackets, so we see expenses. Just can you give me some example of what those expenses might be that fit into that, that sort of bucket of expenses or revenue?
Through the chair, are you referring to then, just the revenue line?
Yeah, right above the net income before transfers, this is other revenue or expenses. In this case, there's three, there's expenses, but I just wonder what, what might be included in that? That's not included in another category.
Through the chair, I believe that some of the other revenues may come from maybe internal transfers of funds. We do have other revenue within our budget that's related to other sales or other revenue through leasing, but I believe that that is separated out within this.
And what about expenses in that category? Because that's how this budget is reading, is that there's over 300,000 of expenses each year.
Through the chair, we may have to bring in Erin to answer this question.
Thank, thank you, thank you for trying.
Thank you, Counselor Robbins, for the question. The other revenue line is purely amortization in this, in this schedule.
Got it. Thank you so much for that.
City Manager Mitchell. Thank you through the chair and to Counselor Robbins. I just wanted to say I was glad you brought those points up, because I've seen in various other municipalities inflated revenue. So I think it's really important that we highlight the importance of projecting as well as we can the revenue from land sales, because some municipalities have used that to more or less balance our budget. So I'm really glad you highlighted that. Thank you.
I don't see any further questions. Thank you.
Mayor Clark.
Yes, Counselor Canodel.
Thank you. Can I just have a, a quick second to speak to Manager Buckner's question about the, the modality?
Just go for it.
Okay, through the chair. So I'm, I'm hopeful to just share my mindset about, about which direction. Now, and I don't, I, I think this is likely the, do you want feedback right now about what we think in regards to how we should approach this particular department? Or is that going to be, is that opportunity coming when we have the briefing note in regards to the land strategy in Q2?
Through the chair, to Counselor Canodel, this would be an absolute great time to have this discussion as we are proceeding on that work currently, and we really did want to use this as an opportunity to see if there is feedback, see if we're on the right path. So we were able to get some feedback from Counselor Hirsch, and if there was anything you were able to share as well, that would be very helpful for us as we, we take our next steps.
Okay, thank you so much. Mayor Clark, can I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I think the, the first thing that came to mind when I was listening to your presentation was just that, ultimately, I think we have an obligation as council to serve the needs of the community, and in regards to land, we can, we, we, we can meet the needs of our residents by, by providing opportunities to create housing or business or what have you. But as, you know, I continue down that path of thought, you know, if I think just exclusively that we have to meet the needs of our community, like that, if that's our driving mission, then, then that, like you said, there's nonprofit groups, and there's other spending that we could be doing, or reallocation of land that could put us into a deficit. And I think that, as you read out the potential options of how we should approach this department, I think it has to be a balance. I don't think that we can function exclusively as, you know, just exclusively meeting the community's needs, even though that should be top of mind, even if we're functioning as a business. So, yeah, I think in my perspective, as you, as you went through the, pardon me, the different options, I'm hopeful that there can be a policy that guides us to consider all of the different, different mindsets about how to, how to approach land sales. And I, and I think having a profit, profit-first approach allows us to be pragmatic, and it allows us to make decisions that are, that, you know, keep us afloat and keep us in, in, in a financial, in a positive financial state. So I'm hopeful that as we move forward, that we can consider all of, all of the different paths that we can take. And again, I, I'm looking forward to more information, because I think, I don't have the answer right now, but I, I really don't want to see it become just one or the other. Like, I, I really like it to be multi, multimodal, multifaceted. So hopefully, that was coherent. And, and I'm looking forward to more informa, more information, because I think, and to make one more comment, I do think that this department is doing a great job. I'm, I'm observing the, the brownfield flips that are happening in the community. For example, the overpass land and, and what we saw last council meeting in regards to Second Street. So those, to, to me, are really good moves, and I'm hopeful to see more of that. And I hope that we continue to meet the needs of the community while also, also keeping the budget in mind. Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I appreciate that you're looking for feedback, and I actually do have some feedback. I think in some cases, a lot of people I've talked to that are in that kind of development stage are basically saying, let us do the residential. And maybe we send, we, 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 the land bank, sell to developers on the residential, but put the focus, and as, as the PowerPoint indicated, commercials oversupplied, but industrials light. But this is where the challenge is with the next presentation on economic development, is I actually hearken back to back in the day of Harold Wilson, of all people, which is almost 20 years ago, where it's, it's the conundrum right between the chicken and the egg. You develop industrial land, you have your sunk costs, but you're already ribbons cut, ready to go, we're open for business, versus having the raw land, and then saying, hey, mister company, we'd love for you to relocate to Medicine Hat, but the, but the turn time is about three years. So I guess I'd love to, and, and why reference Harold Wilson? Because his comment to the council in, in the day was words of courage. Are you willing to spend money into the ground to develop lots in, like, say, industrial right now? Because at the end of the day, you still have to build on that land. And if you think about businesses that kind of need, if they're going to move, they kind of need some lead time, I get it, but they don't need three years. So by that time, the opportunity's fleeting, and we've kind of lost the opportunity. So I don't know what lies in the queue as far as demand goes on industrial. You know, Harold's comment back in the day is, if you give me X amount of lots, I can fill them up. I don't know where we're at, to be honest, and look forward to the presentation on the Act Dev. But that's, I guess, the challenge that maybe this council's grappling with, and, and every council. And it doesn't even matter in Medicine Hat, it's the same challenge that we run into. So I, you know, I, I got challenged a long time ago. You know, why is the city Medicine Hat a land development business? Like, why aren't you just leaving it to private? You know, why is the city Medicine Hat a land development business? Like, why aren't you just leaving it to private? The only challenge is that you are a profit center to the tune of one point some million dollars that we would have to catch up by a tax increase if we weren't in the in that business. I guess the challenge is, what I would like to see is some sort of sweet spot between not not dominating the development field, but working complementary to the private developers as well in terms of a collective path that could lead to, you know, success for both parties. And what I've heard is if we were to bring basically economic development or or business, the houses will come. And that's kind of what I would subscribe to. So just my feedback. But when we've chatted before about land, sadly, my position on that is if we were a true developer, true developers don't sit on a large land bank. And we're missing lots of opportunity in terms of dollars and cents that are wasted every year based on us just holding the land. So I think for me, we need to decide what land we want to keep and what land we think is stuff that we could sell off and and not be material to what we want to do and and move that forward. Because I'm telling you, I've met a lot of developers and they are very hungry because they either they've got land, right? They they either got money in their development and they're finishing out development, and they're buying raw land for the next development, because again, they have to show profit and they have to, you know, they're there to make money. So I'd love to have that conversation and what that sweet spot looks like, but just my thoughts. Thanks.
City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you through the chair and to Councilor Canodel. I just wanted to recap what you said, but I think Councilor Hirsch said it very well. It's that sweet spot in between being a profit center, but also complementing the community. Would that be accurate, Councilor Canodel?
Sorry, I'm I have a weak voice. Yes, through the chair to City Manager. That is is what I'm hopeful for, and Councilor Hirsch was a bit more directed and a bit more specific, and I appreciate that. So yes, thank you, City Manager. I am I'm, and again, as I gather more details and hear more from this particular department, I'd like to form a more comprehensive vision of how I imagine that to look. But I think fundamentally, or just like concept wise, that's exactly what I'm after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Dubanowski.
Thank you through the chair. Yeah, I think some of the conversation thus far, I think, is indicative of where I'm at as well. Sweet spot might be the word of the day. To the point that the City Manager made a little while ago, I, first of all, I appreciate that our revenue projections are accurate or are are based on where we think our development and our sales and our growth is going to occur. I know in the past, we we've overshot that many times, and I'm not sure if it was intentionally used as a leveling tool or not, but it but it often we are having to have conversations about why we didn't hit it or or why the the next budget projections were going to be more accurate or not. So so kind of the precision that you're you're speaking to with the projection, I appreciate, first of all. It's hard to know. I don't I don't, you'd have to crystal ball this, but I mean, certainly, there's value in all of them. I think that's been already indicated. Social value clearly where we can assist with with that in that regard. That's a no-brainer. I think it would be difficult for anyone to disagree with that because it not only is has social value, but it's essential for a fulsome development and build out of a community. As far as, I mean, practically speaking, we want to derive profit. I mean, again, I have to say it. I've been here long enough where we've seen that. And there were years where, to Councilor Hirsch's point earlier, we were, we couldn't develop enough lots. We were developing, we had three hundred and we were behind the ball. So that balance, to my earlier point about the, you know, what percentage of the development we own or or land sales we own relative to the private sector, it's a it's a it's one that we have to grapple with. But what I, so as far as the strategic management piece, obviously, if we have some somebody looking to do something that fits our our growth and is very strategic from the standpoint of where we want it to go or what kind of development it's going to be, clearly, we're going to be looking at it case by case, and I don't think we've ever done anything but create that exceptionality where where necessary. My worry would be that in a depressed environment or market that we are, and I'm going to say it, desperate to get anything on the books, and we now move some of that land into into that category only because we want to satisfy numbers on a chart that we presented, you know, some time ago, in order to demonstrate that we we hit a projection. So specifically, if we are being strategic to the point where we're having to reduce or or cost down our properties to a point where we we derive some profit and we we fit it under the category of strategic management. But in the end, we have, we, and obviously, we derive incremental tax growth, but we have derived less than than market profits. I I start to worry about that. I've seen more and more of that over the last few years. And and again, it could be indicative of of where we're at. But it is, it is, and it's difficult, it is the the public's land bank. It's it's not mine, it's not yours, it's the public's. And so I I recall years ago, a quick backstory where Briar Park was being, there was some interest again. There were lands that were developed in the seventies and sat there for two, three decades before there was uptake on some of that land. And of course, the profit on that was substantial, but but there were sunken costs that were never realized until decades later. So it's it's that it's that balancing act. So I don't think anyone could argue with that. But I I just want to make sure that in a depressed market, we're not willing to give, you know, Mr. Ted Grimm used to have a famous line that I can't quite remember. Maybe Mr. Hirsch, Councilor Hirsch, should recall that you don't want to give away the shoes for less than the cost of the leather or something. The shoe leather to that. That was the story of the day, and I still remember it. So let's be mindful of that. And and in the end, it's just, it's finding that balance. And I, and and that's, it's almost like giving you a giving you a mandate to to do all three, but it it's finding that balance ultimately in the end. And for me, it's just ensuring that we, if we have to hold, we hold. But at the same time, we're not, we're not afraid to be a little bit, not take some added risk, but be be strategic in our risk-taking when it comes to managing our land bank and and appropriately, obviously, deriving some profit in the end. But again, ending where I kind of started was achieving revenues that are that are accurate and reflective of 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 the real market, and I appreciate that, and I'll end on that. Thank you.
Councilor Hyder.
Thank you through the chair, Managing Buckner, just my appreciation and and for the work that goes into all of this. And it was well done and well presented. And I hope you never feel rushed because it's a lot of for us to take in and a lot for you to to share. I too, probably, I'm, yeah, the sweet spot. And I just want to give a little accolade. Like all of us, we talk to a lot of people in the community, and developers have said how there is a collaboration and how working with the city is is become a positive thing. So I just wanted you guys to know that.
Councilor Robbins.
Thank you. And through the chair, you asked for comments. I have four. I hope they will all make sense. I'm just going to read them. So first, with regard to the spectrum itself, we've heard this from a couple of people already. I think balance is the key here. You tip too far to a profit center or you tip too far to public service and you don't, you haven't managed your land holdings very well. So I agree that the balance is necessary. And then some words in the slide, and my other three comments jumped out at me. So the first was tax growth, and I think the city's interest should always be tax growth, of course. We want to keep the services we have, but spread out the cost of them over a larger tax base. That's, that would be ideal. And land development, it's a big part of that. And if that means selling more land to developers so that they can increase the tax rates within their own market-driven competitive sense, then maybe that is the best thing. So it's something to, it just, however we increase the tax base, it's the best interest of the city. You mentioned adaptability, and that really struck me as important. When the city is the developer, we're in a unique position because of the extent of the land holdings to adapt to whatever the need is. And so I wouldn't want to lose that adaptability by reducing the land holdings extensively. And finally, my last comment is, I don't think that market-driven is the best model for municipality, as public interest is such an important consideration. So we would not, if we were market-driven only and a profit center only, we would not have done anything for habitat, for humanity. We wouldn't have done anything for the Medicine Hat Community Housing Society. And our city would be worse off if we hadn't made those choices, in my opinion. Of course, I voted for them, so I guess I could say that. But I think they were important on the public service side of them. So I think a lot of what you've put on this slide has resonated with me, but those four things specifically, if that helps you. Thank you.
All right. No further questions. Thank you very much. And we have economic development up next.
So, good afternoon, members of council. My name is Selena McLean-Moore. I'm the Director of the Economic Development Department. I was asked, I was invited by my fellow director, Kevin Redden, to do a presentation following the land presentation. And this is more just going to be an update as to where we are at with the Economic Development Department and some of the accomplishments we've had to date over the last year. So I accepted the position to rebuild the department in July of last year. And what I could say is that if we, I like to use the analogy, is if we were an airplane, our wheels are off the ground, we are ascending, but we are not quite at cruising altitude yet. So we are working very hard, and we all know the fuel it takes to get off the ground. That's where we're at. So I've got, I've got some exciting things that have happened over the last year. Really, I think it's been about solidifying our foundation, how all the different research that we are doing to make sure we make decisions that are going to affect the community and the work that we do in a good way. So we're going to talk about just quickly the Medicine Hat Economic Development Strategy. Then we're going to go into the main part of the presentation was really, is going to be really around our achievements of this year. So we'll talk about the regional strategy, just an update on that, business supports and incentives, our business retention and expansion work, our Southeast Alberta Municipal Immigration Program, also known as Rural Renewal, and then also what we've been, what we've been able to do with investment attraction. And then finally, we'll just talk a little bit about the future outlook, what we hope to accomplish in the next, in the next few years. All right. So when I, when I started the role in July, I had to bring to council in September. The goal was to bring to council a re-overview of what we wanted to accomplish, what the department's structure was going to look like, and present a budget. So I developed that structure and budget based on this framework. You might remember it from my earlier presentation that I did in September. So if you look at an economic development department, our job, not even as economic, not even as just the department, but as the community as a whole, we want to be able to increase the quality of life and wealth creation. And that's what our department's goal is. So my staff work on business retention and expansion, workforce development, investment attraction, and marketing of our community. I consider these the drivers, but we can't get that done unless we have certain enablers that are allowing us to be able to do the, to to do that work. So the enablers, which this actually falls onto our sister departments, it falls to council to make sure that we have plans in place and we have the infrastructure, we have the bylaws and policies, and we have a healthy community to be able to market and to be able to sell to investors. We, my department will advocate and support other departments and executive leadership to place an economic development lens on decisions around these enablers, such as major projects, planning, and tax policy. So from that framework, I put to, developed a four-pillar strategy. So we work under under the pillars of investment and growth readiness, business and industry development, workforce development, and investment attraction. So just a quick timeline of what's taken place over the last year. As I had mentioned, I came on in July, developed the department's strategy, structure and budget, brought that to council in September of two thousand twenty-three, and received the mandate to go ahead. And so also, in September, we launched the regional strategy. In October, I brought on our first economic development officer, Brady Schnell, to run to run the Rural Renewal Program. And then in January, we we welcomed Darren Hall and Alex Wright, who are other two economic development officers. April was a busy, April was a very busy month where we launched, we actually launched the Rural Renewal Strategy, welcomed Tracy Twaya to be able to assist with that. And we also launched the incentives and our business retention and expansion program. In July, we welcomed Al Sharma, who is our manager of investment attraction. And we had a signature event that took place last month, the Opportunity Medicine Hat Event. I also want to mention that I also have had support from Teresa Teresa Schmidt, who is our Accounts and Contracts Coordinator. She's been with me from the very beginning. So our next milestone is going to be the launch of our regional strategy. And I know there's been a lot of questions from council about where this is at. So what I can tell you, I'll just give you first a little bit of background to refresh you. This was, this was a mandate that we received from council to be able to enter into a partnership with municipalities of Cypress County, County of Forty Mile, Towns of Red Cliff, Bow Island, and Village of Foremost. And really, the idea was to figure out how we can work together as a group of municipalities to leverage each other's strengths and bring increased economic development to the region. So where we're at with this is we have our foundational priorities and our sector priorities identified. And then we are also going to be, we're working right now on, the actions have also been identified. We're working on the framework, and we expect that framework and action plan to be presented to council in December. I believe it's December sixteenth is the next, is is the council meeting where we will, we will be presenting. So the foundational priorities, we have identified talent, attraction, and development. So really, this is workforce, which you'll find is a key issue that we have identified through a lot of different programming as probably one of the biggest issues our our businesses are dealing with right now. And then alignment, alignment and advocacy amongst the municipalities and also to different levels of government. The sector priorities that we've identified for the region are defense and aerospace, agriculture and agrifood, and regional tourism. All right. So on to our accomplishments. So for the rest of the presentation, I would like to.
Sorry, sorry. I apologize, Councilor Robbins. I saw you had, but I was waiting for a break, and then you took it off.
Yeah, it's okay. I can ask, I have a question about the four pillars, but I can wait until the end.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Sounds good. Okay, so our accomplishments. So I would like to share with you our activity, our activities and accomplishments that we've had as a department over the last nine months. So first of all, I just want to, I just want to highlight the culture that we're developing within the department. We really do look at our department as a place where we can foster an environment where businesses can thrive. So how do we do this? I had to make a decision when I formed the department of how we were going to show up for businesses and for our community partners. And what I did, what I, what I quickly realized was that, you know, with a limited amount of staff, we were not going to be able to service our business community in, in a way that would be one-on-one business services. Because we just don't have, we don't have the specialization and we don't have the, the capacity as far as staff to be able to do that. So I took the, I took the lens of facilitate, we are a department of facilitators. So we understand economic development, we understand the roles we play in the community, and we also understand the roles that others play in our community. So our business support organizations like the Chamber of Commerce, like our community futures, Ontrcorp. Those would be two examples of, of organizations that would be the experts to support business that we have the relationships with, we can send those businesses to. We also, I also understood that, you know, being a part of a municipality, we also have fellow, I have fellow directors, we have sister departments that we can depend on to provide support to the businesses as well. So we have, we have supported, we have supported our different, different companies and different businesses and organizations through that connection and collaboration. We have supported a local school academy, connecting them to members of a planning team for rezoning and inspections. We have also supported a local downtown business that was affected by the Third Street construction to streamline their request to open their patio as soon as, as possible. We also hold business support organization meetings where we bring together all of the different business organizations from the community and beyond to talk about what they're working on, to talk about what their challenges are, what they feel there might be gaps in, and, and to look at different ways that we can successfully support our business community. So in the past nine months, we have supported thirty-four businesses and four film companies in accessing the support they need. So our first pillar, investment and growth readiness. So under investment and growth readiness, right now, it is, it is, we are focusing very much on incentives. So the city of, due to the Third Street construction, we offered the city center vibrancy incentive this year. And then as, as managing, as manager Buckner was talking, that we are, we are still seeing some issues with our housing. And with a 1% vacancy rate and one out of five, one out of five families spending more than 30% on housing, we need to be able to increase the diversity of our housing. So that means everything from apartments to duplexes and fourplexes, row housing, all the way to single-family dwellings. We need to be able to find a way to incent developers to be able to do that. So our city center vibrancy incentive, this year, we, we incented a total of $200,000 and that went to eight properties in our downtown core. And our housing infill and redevelopment incentive, this one, I'm, I'm quite happy with the results of this. We have, we have incented 156 new units to date. We still have another, we have a, another tranche that is open and it will be closing within the next week. So the total incentive awards have been 1.785 million and for an annual property tax increase of 180, $180,000 a year. So this is also contributing to the residential development permits that have increased over by 600% to date year over year. Okay, business and industry development. So why do we do industry development? Supporting existing business is a crucial part of an economic development strategy. When businesses, when businesses make their home here, there's a reason. It means that they fit. When they can be successful within the city, they have taken something that we have and have been able to grow a business. And so that means that they, they are going to be easier to stay here than somebody, than a business that we're trying to attract. So we want to be able to, we want to do everything possible to, to help them maintain their business in Medicine Hat. So we want them to feel heard. We want them to know that we're out there working for them. And we want them to trust us, that we are going to take action when we see issues that we, when we, when we've identified issues that they may have. So the goals of industry and business development are to decrease business closures and increase industry expansion. So this leads me to our business retention and expansion industry-specific work that we are doing. I like to say that the, the BREEZE is the heart of an economic development strategy. Because everything we do when we are looking at our current industry can funnel into all of the other work that we do, whether it's workforce, whether it's investment attraction, whether it's incentives. We, when we survey what's going on in the community, we identify what the challenges might be that they're, they're dealing with, what gaps they might see, issues they may have, and what the opportunities there are. And then we can better create a story for why businesses, certain industries should be coming to Medicine Hat. It's a really important piece of our work. So we have partnered with numerous organizations and municipalities to take on the surveying for two, two different industries. How this process works is it first starts with a community assessment and the preparation for the program. This is the, I would say, the most important part of the process because we, what we do is we actually survey the industries, an initial survey of, of the industry to find out what their leading issues are. So that when we understand that, we can develop a survey that is targeted to, is targeted specifically for those industries. So the second step is survey development, and then we conduct the business visitation. We then analyze the data and identify the issues. We're producing reports, state of the industry reports with recommendations and action planning. And then the last final phase is, is actually taking a step to deliver on those actions. So we identified this year, the two priority sectors were manufacturing and defense aerospace, defense aerospace and aviation. And so the, the critical issues that we found coming up with these, with these sectors was workforce, supply chain and expansion support for manufacturing and workforce, again, innovation and technology and capitalizing on opportunity for air. So we prioritize, prioritize completing surveys at their business, at the actual businesses so we could show up for our, show up for our businesses and really get a sense of their operations. We were lucky to be able to take tours of some of them. And I think that the business owners really appreciated us being involved in really understanding their business. So we completed a total of forty-five visitations. This amounted to 40% of manufacturing warehouse and distribution companies and 88% of aerospace, aviation and defense. So just, we will be having, as I stated, we will be having the state of industry reports that will be coming out at the end of, at end of November and the beginning of December. But I just wanted to highlight a couple key, key things that we learned. So there's incredible signs of business confidence in Southeast Alberta with 70, 70% likely to expand in the foreseeable future. And when we asked what the three business climate factors are that were most important to businesses today, again, workforce came up as the number one issue the businesses are facing, followed by power constraints, and third being municipal regulations and ease of doing business. So I will also mention, you know, some of this information is probably not a surprise to you. You're probably thinking, well, yeah, you know, some of, you know, some of this stuff we already know. One of the really nice things about doing, doing BREEZE work is that we now have data, like it's confirmed data. So when we go to, say, a government department to look for funding for, for, you know, economic development projects, we now have hard data to be able to back up why we're asking for what we're asking for. So there's, there are a lot of good reasons to, to, to capture the data in more of a scientific format. Another thing is baseline data. So we now have baseline data for our manufacturing sector and for our defense and air, which we, you know, hopefully within three to five years, we might be able to do it again and see where we've grown as a community in those sectors. So the next state, next steps are state of industry or reports, like I said, will be coming out within the next few weeks. We will be working, we are actually currently working with community partners to determine our, to, to determine our activities for the action plan. And we are looking at some future sectors we will be targeting next year. So workforce development. So why workforce? You've heard me mention workforce probably ten times already. It is, it is the number one issue. It is a pillar in our strategy because of a few things. So we've got the working age population that's aging out, and we are not replacing that with babies and youth. So what's going to happen is that, you know, in ten to twenty years, we aren't going to have enough workers to fill the jobs that we need to be filled. Required skillsets are changing. Due to the technological age, skillsets are changing and they are now, there are now mismatches, leaving people unemployed and employers without a workforce. Baby boomers are retiring and immigration numbers have risen significantly over the past year, past few years. So my, my team works very closely, again, with, with this pillar as well. We work very closely with a number of organizations in the community. Having these partnerships enables us to respond quickly to the needs of business and industry. So we've done a, we have a couple of projects. Well, we've got one project, our labor market profiles that I wanted to share. So why do we do, why have we done these labor market profiles? So this, these profiles were just released a couple of weeks ago. They, they're important. What they are is they are basically a booklet, it's a, it's, it's data that shows all of the different indicators when it comes to the labor market. So these indicators will help businesses make decisions. If a business is looking at restructuring, they need to be able to understand what their labor force looks like. If they're looking at developing or developing new technology or adopting new technology, they may have to change the makeup of their skill, skill set within their facility. They may have to be able to train their staff on certain skills. And they may look at expansion and they need to be able to understand what labor market is available for them. It's support, it also supports organizations like the Medicine Hat College with matching programs to needs of businesses and industry. And finally, labor market profiles help business support organizations to better determine the needs of employers and workforce. So some of the key data that we learned from the labor market profiles, again, four point cent, four, a four point cent, 4.8% population increase of individuals sixty-five and older. Conversely, only a 2.8% population decrease in, in the 25 to 64 age group. Twenty-eight percent of employers reported vacant positions. And healthcare, retail, trade and construction sectors anticipated, they are anticipated to lead employment growth in the region. Youth, indigenous people and mature workers represent the highest unemployment and immigrants are higher employed than the average. This, the, when I talked about how organizations can use these profiles, well, Medicine Hat Economic Development actually use these profiles to validate some of the decisions we've made for the regional, the Rural Renewal Strategy that I'm going to talk about right now. So Rural Renewal, we are now referring to a program called the Southeast Alberta Municipal Immigration. And so what this program is, is it, is a program that supports employers to fill job vacancies with immigration. It's a partnership, another regional partnership between Medicine Hat, Cypress County, Red Cliff and Bow Island. One of the things that I'm really proud of, my team with this program is how we took into account the socioeconomic issues that we're dealing with and how immigration plays a part in that. So we did look at, we did look at what kind of wage we were going to expect employers to pay, given the fact that we do have pressures on our social services. So we implemented a living wage for young families so that we could address issues like affordability, housing and the high youth unemployment rate. So over the last seven months, we have connected with 128 employers, supported in eight industries. We have had ten job placements per month. And those job placements have been with individuals averaging thirty-one years or older earning about, earning $21 an hour average. Okay, investment attraction. So investment attraction, as we all know, is about bringing investment into, into the community. What I do know from the work that we've done over the last nine months is that businesses still have not recovered from the departure of our oil and gas industry. We are, we are desperately needing industry attraction. And I think that once we find that industry to come to Medicine Hat, it is going to solve a lot of the other challenges that we see with our retail services, with food, with accommodations. The industry is going to be the, they're going to be the fuel for the rest of our community. And so we've got to look at diversification. Oil and gas is not coming back. Investment attraction is a long-some game and it takes time and money to do it right. So if we go back to the business retention and expansion work we've been doing, investment attraction is about figuring out what industry makes the most sense to be in Medicine Hat and finding the right ways to bring them here. Okay, so looking at our current business, you know, we have to look at our current business and industry makeup. So figuring out, we have to look at our infrastructure and our assets. So what's, what does our land bake look like? These are conversations we just had with the land department. Our utility capacity, what are the supply chains? Where are the gaps in supply chains where we might be able to find a company to come in to be able to fill one of those gaps? What does our workforce look like? And how are we going to attract the right companies that are going to be able to use the workforce that we've got here? And what are the other companies, what companies do they need for competitive, the competitive advantages we offer? So really matching what we're really good at to what companies need. So some of the principles of investment attraction that will influence how we work as a department. Okay, so investor, investors want a roadmap. Investment is a high-risk decision. They want security. They want to be able to, they want to be able to see that, that the city has our processes refined. They want to be able to see security in prices. They want to be able to see security within this, just the way the city is run. We want to be able to target the right investors. Our investors are really a partner in economic growth. So we want to make sure that we are targeting the investors that, that see it themselves as a good fit. We want to be able to leverage our existing networks and, and connections. So this falls into industry, it's being able to work well with our current industry. And it's also being able to leverage the networks that we build beyond Medicine Hat to be able to have them sell Medicine Hat for us. And it's also about leveraging our support agencies as, as we, as we look to attract investment. We need to be able to offer support and incentives, so streamline services. So it's competitive, it's a competitive business. So we do have incentives. But one thing I keep hearing over and over, investors are now starting to say we don't necessarily need really strong incentives. We want to see streamlined processes. We want to see decreased red tape and we want to be able to see basically the roadmap of how we actually get our investment there done and done quickly. And they also want to see the community have, have a long- And they also want to see the community have, have a long-term view. So can we, can we offer utility, utility rates into the future, a utility commitment? Do we have the lifestyle that they're looking for, for their employees? So our investment attraction process that we are currently working on right now, understanding our environment, this is our business retention and expansion work. We are going to be developing, we are currently in, in the works of developing a strategy which will be done early in 2025. We need to be able to decide in that strategy who we want to attract and how we will attract them. I will say that this, this strategy will be done in collaboration with our sister departments of Land Planning and Services as well. We want to be able to develop tools. We have to have support tools to, to attract people here, to attract business, strong website, social media, marketing pieces, and networks. And, and then finally, we have that where, you know, we're executing the plan, and we're, we are reviewing and refining. And I will say that we are already doing this, but as we, as we grow as an apartment, we will get stronger, we will, we will get stronger. So this leads me to an event that we, to share about an event that we held about a month ago called Opportunity Medicine Hat. Really, this, this was one of the first things that I wanted to accomplish after bringing on our manager of investment attraction, Al. The way I see investment attraction is that it is all about partnerships, and we have many, many potential partners, not just within the city, but across, across Canada. And we had to, I, I, I felt like it was the time for us to re-engage with these partners. And so instead of us going off right away to sell Medicine Hat on our own, why not leverage the relationships we have with individuals and organizations across the province first? So we did this by targeting, we did, we did an event where we targeted local, we targeted local businesses, we targeted industry, we targeted our regional partners and elected officials. And so our first night was in the Evening Mixer sponsored by Methanex. We moved into the next morning with a cultural city tour, which was sponsored by Tours of Medicine Hat. This was, we brought out the Sunshine Trolley, and they were toured, and they got to see, you know, the, the beautiful city we have, along with a lot of the history around our manufacturing sector and our oil and gas sector, followed by presentations at the Espinade, where we really got a chance to, we worked with, collaborated with the other departments of Land Planning Services, where we, we really shared our value proposition as a city. Then we had networking and regional partners attend a lunch with the premier, followed by industry tours with Methanex and UVAD. So what I will say is that this was an extremely successful event. We have heard really, really good feedback. We had somebody say they were going back to their home in Edmonton, saying they were going to come, they were going back home to look at real estate in Medicine Hat. We had another person talk about how she, she saw the city really, the city of Medicine Hat really had the energy. So it was, we had somebody say it was the best tour, municipal tour they've ever been on. So it was successful, and what we're seeing from that is we're getting, we are engaging with a lot of these organizations. We've had meetings with Invest Alberta, with the Trade Commissioners, with, with our Alberta-China office, all because of them coming to Medicine Hat and experiencing what we have. So I'm going to show a quick video of, of the event. All right. So a quick summary of our activities that have taken place over the last nine months. We have had 180 unique business connections through surveys, engagement, support, and investment inquiries. We've partnered with 13 business support organizations and five municipalities. We've engaged and promoted the city and region to 15 investment organizations, and we've hosted 70 elected officials and municipal administrators at, at the networking event with the premier. So we've accomplished a lot of preliminary work to set the stage for evidence-based decision-making, and we are now, we now understand industry and workforce challenges and opportunities. Our surveys will support our future work and the future work of partner agencies. So where to from here? Rather than wait for investment inquiries, my department will be proactive in searching for those companies that will be a good fit with Medicine Hat. Through the Breeze and the regional strategy, we will deliver on projects to support industry. We will, we've, we will be revising the incentive program, programming for both housing and industry, and we will continue with our workforce development and immigration. So the work we have done and will continue to do will be the cornerstone for moving Medicine Hat and Southeast Alberta into a leading economic region. Once named the forgotten corner, we are transforming into the corner of opportunity. In five years, we will look very different. We will have a nearly twinned highway to the US border, carbon capture and storage hub, electricity fully restored across the city, renewable generation opportunities for industry, and an integrated economic development department that has secured its roots, built strong relationships, and provided a clear strategy for growth. Thank you. So I'll take any questions.
Counselor Robbins?
Thank you, and through the chair. I had questions, Director McLeanmore, but you answered all of them during your presentation. I wanted to know more about the pillars and why you had defined them the way that you did, because obviously, when you chose them, you chose the words for, with intention. But as you were speaking about each of them and giving examples, I felt like I understood it was very clear what you were talking about. So I'm, I'm not usually the thinker, that's usually Counselor Hyder's job, I don't want to take her job, but the amount of work that you've accomplished and your team has accomplished is just phenomenal. And I must say, when I started on council, I really had trouble seeing how economic development could take flight again, and I now, I really see it. So thank you so much for all your work. I don't have any questions, just appreciate your time.
Thanks, Counselor Robbins. Counselor Van Dyke?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Thank you for this update. We don't always see the reports and the information, since we don't have committees over economic development, so this is really helpful for us to have this come forward, and I think especially for the public too, to know what you, your team is working on and the many impressive things that you've done in this short amount of time. I wondered if you could just reference or expand a little bit on something from your last slide, where you talk about in the five years, we'll look different in the renewable generation opportunities for industry. My assumption is that we have inquiries from companies wanting to come into the region that have a requirement or are looking for renewable energy as part of their business plan, and I'm just wondering if that is actually the case based on the slide? If you could expand on that, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, through the chair, Counselor Van Dyke, that is, that is exactly it. We've, when, when the news came with the Sama Solar Project, we started getting, we started getting inquiries around how companies could leverage, leverage that project. Counselor Dumanowski?
Through the chair, I want to be the thankful person. I'll take my turn. But no, I appreciate the presentation. I just wanted, going back to that workforce analysis that you did, or profiling, and I don't want to put words in both, but you said something to the fact of now we have an understanding of where, where our workforce looks like, and we're trying to match it to business proposition or opportunities. I, I'm not the expert at all, but I, I always find that a little bit of a misnomer, because, or it seems to me it's a little bit of a misnomer, because I believe, my senses simplistically, if we attract any kind of business that, that is, isn't a direct match, or is, is indirectly matched to our workforce, they will come. The old builder, they will come. That's simplistic way of looking at it, but, and maybe I'm just not understanding it, but I, I feel in some regard, by understanding our workforce market or profile, that helps us determine where we're immediately prepared to respond. But, but there, there ought to be, and I suppose there are opportunities for other sectors or other environments where we can develop outside of what our immediate workforce demonstrates. And I, and maybe you can respond to that, but the other piece to it is, on your tour, your, the success of that tour, and I'm pleased to hear that, I, I'm just curious, were you able to glean, and if you, if you don't want to respond, or maybe you're not able to, because some of those leads, which I'll be referring to here shortly, are, are kind of being confidential at the moment, or being kept close to secrecy, because we don't want to give it, give it away. But do we have any idea of what sectors or what areas some of those leads are, business leads are moving toward? And, and do we, do we have a sense from some of that conversation? Maybe they're not even necessarily leads or that are going to be immediate, but we're, through those conversations, we've identified, you know, immediate gaps that we need to look at in order to ensure that we have a strategic opportunity moving forward to, to capture some growth in those areas. So kind of broad questions, but I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? If not, we can talk some other time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dumanowski. I'm through the chair. I'll just address the workforce question first. Yeah, I, I hear what you're, I do hear what you're saying, that we, you know, when an industry or a company decides to come to Medicine Hat, the workforce will, will follow. If we have the housing, I might add. But I, I think that there's an opportunity for us to be able to capitalize on that, especially when we look at our post-secondary institutions. So if we have, if we have an industry that has a, that is requiring a specific skill, skill set, a lot of times what they'll do is they will actually partner with the local post-secondary institutions to be able to develop programming to be able to support their workforce. So it's being able to, it's being able to have, be able to have those conversations, and to be able to share with those potential investors what the makeup of our workforce does look like. Because the more information they have, might not always be the information they want, but if they have the data, they are much, they are much more able to make those decisions. Yeah. Gaps for industry. So I would say that, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing a variety of investment inquiries, everything from defense and, defense and aerospace, agriculture, petrochemical, manufacturing. And as far as what the gaps are, I, I, I'm not sure I, I don't, I'm not sure I feel comfortable answering that at this, at this juncture, but it will be something that becomes more clear, I think, as we delve more into our investment attraction strategy.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch?
Thanks. Appreciate the presentation, obviously, and, you know, I just kind of reflect a little bit on some of the, sorry, I'm battling a cold, is, just reflect on some of the presentation that, that you'd indicated, and, and maybe it just kind of dawned on me, and maybe this was done with, with some purpose, but, you know, you talk about the advocacy, the advocacy bit, and then talked about placement services, and I'm thinking, is that an overlap on existing, like I think of the chamber in terms of advocacy, and then placement services, there's existing placement services. I'm just wondering, is that done with intent as an augment or as, as an addition? Is that the intention to be more well-rounded? And maybe I'll leave you with that question first. I've got a couple other.
Through the chair, Counselor Hirsch, I see this as, any advocacy would be in the part, in partnership with all, with those organizations that are already doing that. We also have to think about advocacy. If I, I mean, I know that that was part of the regional strategy, but I could also answer it as part of our department and how we work within the city. I think that there's a, there's room for us to be an advocate within confines of City Hall. So, you know, how do we put economic development lens on the, on, not even major projects, on lots of different types of decisions that we're making? An economic development lens can make things, make what you thought a certain situation, you thought you knew what you would think a certain situation would be, it can completely change when you, when you look at the, when you look at the different ways that those decisions can affect the economy. So it's, it's not always a numbers game, is what I'm saying, I guess, right?
Appreciate that, yeah. As far as, and I, and I was challenged a little bit in the previous, what, what is it that, you know, we're looking for land development and that sort of thing? And I kind of think of the same thing in economic development and what I'm looking for, and, and obviously, we've had that conversation about trying to drive economic development, and I know it needs to take root, I need, I know the foundation needs to get built. I appreciate that it is being built. Quite frankly, and unfortunately, there's a lot of set of eyes on it now, as you, as you, as you ramp up your, your team, all of a sudden, it attracts people to say, what's going on? And then unfortunately, the more you ramp up the team, the higher the expectations go in whatever that is. So my question is, whatever that is, what's your milestone for success? What could we accept, expect as city counselors to say, you know, your key performance indicator is this? You know, and I know you're going on, the most exciting part for me is, as you build a foundation, is just going out and selling Medicine Hat. I get it, and it's coming, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, as you know, I'm foaming at the mouth trying to get, get this to go. But I'm just wondering, when we look back in, in one year's time, and we say, okay, this is what we were planning on doing, what does that look like? And what's the, what's the metric for us to say what's successful in economic development department?
Through the chair, Counselor Hirsch, I, I know that you'll understand it when I say that KPIs can vary, short-term KPIs can be very challenging in economic development. We, we will be developing those KPIs as we get further along in our strategy. What I will say is that time and time again, I'm just seeing industry attraction and, and building the current industry that we have, helping them to expand, has to be our number one priority, because it will affect everything else. So I, I'm, my team is going to be placing, placing great effort in that. I think the partnerships that we develop are also going to, are definitely going to help us with that as well. As far as KPIs, I don't have those right now. We are, we are into the strategy of development in the next few months, so we will be having those, and we will be presenting on that next year.
No, I appreciate that, and, and the intention obviously is not to put you on the spot, that's not my intention at all. I think what, what people and taxpayers expect can sometimes be not in reality. I think what, what people and taxpayers expect can sometimes be not in reality. And as a person that kind of is in the business in terms of the business development and that sort of piece, I know it's a pipeline, you have to build it. The opportunities just don't come weekly, monthly. It takes years to develop. And I guess that's why I'm hoping for a very long-dated tour of prosperity for our economic development team, that we're involved for the long term, not the short term. I hope future councils realize the value of a strong economic development team because it actually, the work that goes on actually supplants or goes beyond one term of a four-year term, if people can understand that. If you think about courting people, courting other companies to come to Medicine Hat, it's a very long game because they might be tied into a lease in their current environment. There's all sorts of logistical. We just talked about land and development, about where's the courage, as I got challenged one time ago, 15 years ago, by a person that was in your role, saying, you know what? If you give us serviced land, we can, you know, maybe deliver X, Y, Z. So it has to go in tandem, and I appreciate your comments on partnership because, you know, I would consider actually council as a partner as well because we need to make some, sometimes maybe decisions that would be, I guess, proactive in terms of developing land for an unknown entity that would come to Medicine Hat, but it has to be prepped. It has to be, we have to be available to receive those individuals that might just arrive at our doorstep. So I, I agree with you 100% in terms of it's hard to do the KPIs. I just, I think maybe this is just a, maybe a plea to the citizenry out there. I know we're loading up on our economic development team. Of course, a lot of expectation is, okay, results, results, results. I guess I'm commiserating with you to say, let's be patient. We're building something that's going to have some longevity. I guess maybe can you give us some insights a little bit when you talk about proactive reach-outs, as you indicated? What does that look like? And what is your team, you know, and I know you've got different, you mentioned Brady, Darren, Alex, Tracy, like all the people that are on there. Can you kind of highlight a little bit of, not either individual roles and responsibilities, but kind of areas of focus and what a proactive reach-out as your next step looks like?
Sure. So on my team, I'll talk first workforce development. We have Brady, who leads the Rural Renewal Strategy, and he's supported by Tracy. This job, this is, this has been a huge job to get this Rural Renewal Strategy off the ground. Two full-time people. We're now able, he's now, due to some of the changes we've made in the program, he's now able to step, take a little bit of a step away. Tracy is, Tracy's doing a lot of the coordination now. So that in itself, I mean, we've, you know, we've, we've supported 70 businesses, you know, with job offers in the last seven months. So I think that that, that would be a KPI that, you know, we've got employers that are now finding the workforce they need. So if we look at business retention and expansion, that is Alex Wright. So she is leading both the Business Retention and Expansion Program, as well as she did the Labor Market Profiles. Business retention expansion is just, it is, I cannot, I can't, I can't like say enough how important that work is to economic development. If you go to, if you go to any economic developer, they will say that is one of the most important pieces of their work. And so she is the one that is leading, leading that work to make sure that our businesses are feeling heard and that we are identifying challenges, businesses that might be looking at closing. Okay, so how can we step in? How can we support them to make sure that they, they can hopefully help them to survive? Then, like I had talked about, that feeds into the investment attraction. So business retention expansion work will, will be ongoing. The KPI for that is really that we are, we are reaching out to businesses and we are finding ways to be able to support them through, through action planning. And those, those actions will be coming out over the next year. Darren Hall, Economic Development Officer, he leads our investment, our incentive file along with Teresa Schmidt. She also supports him with that. And so this is, we are going to be digging into how, you know, we're going to reflect on, well, if the business case for the incentives is approved, we will be reflecting on how, how did things go this year? Did we accomplish what we wanted to accomplish? Is there a more, a more efficient way to do that? This is actually a conversation that him and I had just today, that, you know, there might be more efficient ways to be able to run the incentives. That's something that we're talking about. But 156 units were, you know, have development permits, are in the works. So I would say that that has also been a success, $180,000 a year annual in increase in property taxes. So I think that, that has, I would say that one is a success. And then if we look at investment attraction, this is one that is going to take some time. We are, when you talk about, when you're asking about a proactive approach, how are we doing that? Al, so first of all, I think that showcasing our community was a success. And I know that there's no tangible outcomes from that as far as investment coming in, but we're also only in the beginning stages of this relationship development. And so I do see that this is something that is going to really help us in the future because those individuals, which was 23, by the way, 23 individuals from across the province, now understand our community better than they would have ever through a Zoom call. It's, the tour that they were able to take, and they loved it. Like, people love Medicine Hat. It's, it's a beautiful community, right? And so it was so exciting to be able to bring them here, and we worked hard. I will say that, like, to get, to get 23, 23 people from across Alberta to come down to Medicine Hat, the, you know, the little corner down here, we worked really hard. But, but, so we did it, we did it. And so I think that that, that in itself, I think, was a success. Now, when Al starts leveraging those relationships, he was just at the Aerial Evolution of Canada Conference this last week. So he is now promoting Medicine Hat as a place for, for drone activity and drone businesses. So he's developing those connections, but they take time. He's only been to one conference, right? And the more he goes, he's going to see these same, these same people at different conferences. He's going to start developing those connections, meet investors, and continue to sell, continue to sell why they should invest here. So I think that I, I think I touched on all of my, my team. Does that help?
No, absolutely. And I appreciate it. And I think it's just kind of illustrative of the ask in that whole department, like you said, between retention, all the, all the different facets of what economic development means is a big, it's a big elephant to tackle. So I appreciate the efforts for sure. You know, obviously, you know, economic development and everything's tied together. We want, and as citizens, we want to have our children obviously live and prosper and do things in Medicine Hat and work here and raise a family as well. And that's the keys to it. A lot of us have sat around the tables in regards to what does that look like? And I, and I think we all want to get to there. It's just a matter of chart the plan, work the plan, and implement the plan. So appreciate that. My final question is regards to the incentives. You've had, you've had some time in the chair now. I guess the question I have is, are, is our incentive program robust enough in comparison to other municipalities, other programs that are out there? And the reason I ask that is that, again, we talk about the sweet spot. Realistically, if we have a strong incentive program, it does mean that we, the whole idea is to track, attract industry to Medicine Hat, which would be something of the lure with the idea that they would just fade into normal taxpaying businesses. You know, you hear all the time about this being waived and this being waived for a certain period of time. Meanwhile, depending, and I've talked about this numerous times in previous councils, I would love to see if, if there's a menu that says, hey, if you bring in 100 jobs, this is the incentive. If you bring in X amount of jobs, this is the incentive. And almost a graduated incentive program. And why I think that's important is obviously if you've got a larger employer, they're going to be courted by multiple municipalities. And I guess I'm just wondering, has that thought process ever been considered? Am I out of my, am I out of my mind with that sort of mentality or just your thoughts? And I just, I just think about the incentives, it's kind of like a balancing act of just having it right, right? With the, with the amount of taxpayer money to incent versus people just coming here organically, and that's the challenge, right? So just your feedback on that?
Sure. Through the chair. What I, you know what, what I do know is that what businesses are looking for is stability. They're looking for less red tape. They want to be heard. They want good service. So when we can, when we, and what I like to call them is non-financial incentives, right? We are incenting companies to come here when we have processes that make them want to do business here. So that's one of the things that we have been working closely with our planning, Land and Planning Department on. As far as our investment, our investment tax credits, I would say that the way that that investment tax credit is set up, it is similar to what you're explaining because we do look at, there's different indicators, and they get a certain amount of tax credit based on those indicators. So we're talking about increased tax revenue, jobs, utilities. There's one other one, I can't, I can't place it right now, but it is very similar. And as far as how we compare to different jurisdictions, I would say we, I would say we, we are definitely, you know, in our weight class. I'm not sure what some of the other mid-sized cities offer, but I do know some of the smaller communities near Calgary are very similar, have a very similar tax credit that we do. So we are, but I, and what I will say is that we are in the midst of doing some research on that. What I plan to do is in, I'm hoping by Q3 of next year, we're going to bring a brand-new revised recommendation for incentives with residential, commercial, and industrial tax credit, or, sorry, incentives to council for your consideration.
Is that, is that going to be like in somewhat collaboration with the chamber? Because we've had numerous chamber meetings where they talk about incentives, what's the right size? So I don't know how much dialogue you've had with the chamber at all in regards to...
Yeah, through the chair, I, I have had conversations with the UDI Committee, and we have committed to surveying, surveying that committee when we look at our residential incentive programs, just to make sure that their, their voices are heard. We'll, we'll make sure to do a strong survey with different organizations to make sure we, we have the right information to make the decisions.
Probably Real Estate Board and Build will be on that list as well. City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you. Through the chair, and a couple of things that, to Counselor Van Dyke's point and also Counselor Hirsch, we did notice in the recent check-in with strategic planning that because there isn't a standing committee for economic development, there wasn't as much information getting out to the public and/or council. So we're going to rectify that in January, and likely it'll be through the DNI Committee. But that's something in 2025, we want to make sure that all the good work that Selena and her team are doing, that it's being showcased. Because as you know, through the standing committee system, there's press there, there's media there, and members of council, and we get highlights in minutes. So that's something we're going to be addressing in 2025.
Counselor Hyder.
Thank you, and through the chair. First off, wonderful presentation, Selena. I enjoy it. And this is probably one of my, not to be biased, this is one of my favorite topics in regards to the organization. So just well done, well done on building your team, well done, well done on your positivity. It is a challenging department, to say the least. I just wanted to, we talked about just a couple things because Counselor Hirsch took most of my thunder, but a couple things. We talk about advocates, and I remember growing up here and loving the community. I've always been an advocate for Medicine Hat, and I think we all are advocates, whether you're with the organization or if you're a council, you're an ambassador for the community and how many wonderful things we have to offer. And so when you are talking to industries and businesses, and there's always, you're kind of in the back door, you're selling the community, which is pretty easy. And your relationship building that you're working on with all these different people and municipalities is just, you're doing very well. So I just wanted to end on that high note and thank Selena and her team for all the hard work. And I put in for an Ekdev t-shirt, just so everyone knows.
I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much, and thank you to Randy as well, Manager Buckner, sorry, and Director McLeanmore. Okay, so I am now going to request recess, including a time, so that council can break for refreshments and a bio-break prior to going into closed? Well, I was gonna, we can do it either way. We can come back and go into closed, but we can't make a motion for a recess in closed.
I was going to make a motion for a recess, and I think we have the summary and recap before we go into closed anyway. But that was supposed to be after the break, right? Yes, am I right about that? So I would make a motion to adjourn.
How long is, how long is the next part of the presentation?
Thank you through the chair. Depends on your questions, but likely it's just a recap and some direction from council. So I would say probably 15 minutes to a half an hour.
I would still like to make a motion to adjourn at this time and come back to the recap. That's the way it was on the agenda, so that's what I anticipated.
I'll second.
How long?
I think it was scheduled for half an hour, so back at 6:40.
Okay. So we, I, I think we still have to vote on the motion. So let's vote. Counselor Sharps and Counselor Hyder, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hyder. I meant Counselor Canotl. So that passes and we will recess?
Just a point of order. My name's not on there.
How do you vote, Counselor Hirsch?
I vote yes, yeah.
Okay, so that passes and you'll note that for the record, and we will return at 6:40. Okay, so that passes and you'll note that for the record and we will return at six forty.
Okay, everyone, we're going to reconvene. Just before we proceed, I'm taking over as chair. The mayor has asked that I do that. She had to attend elsewhere, but I believe she is going to be attending via Teams. Mayor Clark, are you on Teams right now?
Yes, sir, I am. And here's my face.
Thank you. And we still have Councilor Sharps and we're having some issues. City manager.
Thank you. I just received a text from Councilor Knodel, and she's having issues with the link and wondering if anybody can resend it to her.
So are we able to proceed or do we wait for her to reconnect to Teams? Is the million-dollar question. Okay. I think we're going to proceed respectfully. Okay, thank you, Mr. Heimer. Thank you. Welcome back. Long time no see. I'm kidding, but it's great to have you back here. So we're going to have you, as indicated before the recess, do the recap and deliberation component of our meeting. And I do have Teams up, so if any of the councilors or the mayor wish to speak, just put your hand up and hopefully I'll be able to see it in time and recognize you. And if I don't, please just make your presence be known by voicing out loud. Proceed.
Thank you through the chair. Good evening, council, and thank you for this opportunity to come and speak. This is the fourth of our budget deliberation series where we've gone through our operating and capital budgets. We've talked about all of the new growth opportunities that we are looking to proceed with as a city. And now, as we're wrapping up here, I appreciate that the information that is up on the slide was not in the packet because it came as a later addition. However, the information that is on the slides are just snapshots from what we have already looked at, so there's no new information here. So with this session, this recap and deliberation, really what we're trying to do is we're trying to capture some of those key highlights. I like to think when we're talking about a budget, we're not just talking dollars and cents, but a budget needs to tell a story. And in order for it to be comprehensible so that it can be understood, so that you can have comfort, it needs to tell a story. So that's what we've attempted to do over the course of the year, starting with a very broad scope. Back in April, when we showed those key budget assumptions, talked about our commitments to the community, the goals that we had set out, and set forward certain fiscal targets that we were going to maintain within. In June and July, we came back and we talked about all of the new growth opportunities that we had proposed to council to help enact your strategic plan. And through the last four series, starting on October 22nd with our rate-based utilities, we've gone in detail through the operating budgets, through the capital budgets. We've talked about the main drivers. We've talked about the variances, why things are going up or coming down, and talked about some of those hot topic issues such as what is our utility rate and our tax rate recommendations. We provided an opportunity for council to ask questions to gain clarity, and council has been gracious to ask questions and to engage with us as we've provided these presentations. And now, as we go into this second, this part here today, this is an opportunity now for us to hear from you. So I'm going to do a quick recap on what we've seen over the last four meetings, and then I'm going to open the floor up to council. Starting with what we started on, which was on October 22nd with our rate-based utilities, we began our journey by looking at our rates. We showed how the average resident utility rate was set to increase by 1%, 5% for commercial and 4% for industry. Rate-based utilities exclude gas and electric commodities, which is a part of the energy production budget, as well as federal carbon levies. This information that you're seeing on the screen is on the city webpage and is refreshed twice a year. It can be found under home properties and utilities on the city website. It's important to note that when we're comparing 2024 rates for these municipalities, we're comparing the 24 rates with what we're showing as a 2025 utility rate. And even when compared to what the current rates are in Calgary, Lethbridge, Edmonton, Red Deer, Fort McMurray, Grand Prairie, the average residential customer is saving approximately $768 per year. The 2025 rates are lower than the current rates for other municipalities demonstrating affordability. Looking at the energy production, this was the second deliberation section we went to, which we've showed that over the past couple of years has provided unprecedented one-time earnings for the city of Medicine Hat. And we are not anticipating for those to continue into the future. Over the next number of years, as a city, with those earnings coming down, we are anticipating in our reserves for the city as a whole that we will be drawing cash from our reserves as opposed to putting money into those reserves. That's not to say that energy production is going to be in a negative position, but overall, we will be drawing cash from the city, which puts additional pressure on the municipality as well. We need to respond to what this looks like to live in a lower earnings environment for the municipality. Energy production has a number of big decisions, including some of the details that will be shared today and closed, and then moved into open later this month. So stay tuned for that. On the municipal side, we looked at the most recent community survey and saw that most residents were feeling that they do receive good value for their tax dollars. The city provides amenities and facilities that exceed the norms of other communities in our parks, recreation, culture services, roads, and protective services like police and fire, which exceed provincial and national averages for service. We showed how the city of Medicine Hat has provided a historical level of community support far in the past number of years, far beyond what other communities have been able to provide. And we also showed that the city is demonstrating excellence in customer service by responding to an increase in the number of requests for information and finding innovative ways to meet communication needs within the city. Here, we recommend a 5.6% tax increase in 2025 and again in 2026. This will allow us to achieve our commitment to steady predictable tax increases, close the historic budget gap by 2028, continue to work towards a municipality that is self-sustaining, invest in new growth opportunities that the city needs, and catch up on forgone property tax revenue during the pandemic. The final session that we just went through was with land development and real estate. And the primary question that was posed here was how do you define the success of a land transaction? The land department is revisiting its strategy, coming back to council in Q2 of 2025 with a focus on remaining adaptable and financially sustainable, and asking itself these questions. a focus on remaining adaptable and financially sustainable, and asking itself these questions. So, we believe that the budgets that we've shown you today meets the mandate to balance the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. This budget represents administration's best recommendation for the use of city funds in 2025, 2026. With our major sources of funding, including property tax, utilities, and other municipal fees, we have tried to balance affordability with the need to invest in city infrastructure and operations. We have gone back to the drawing board multiple times to find ways to make things more affordable for residents, both on the property tax and on the utility side. We have kept our commitment to avoiding price spikes and instead have looked to provide steady predictable rate increases across all municipal revenue categories. This budget also invests in executing council's strategic priorities, and we believe that this budget demonstrates a strong commitment to meeting those priorities across all business operations. We believe that we have made investments to meet our community needs, like our downtown patrol units, to provide a sense of safety and security to our downtown core. We have found creative ways to realign our FTE ask to make room for new growth opportunities so that we are not recommending an increase in headcount in this budget. This budget thoughtfully looks at our use of financial reserves, ensuring to maintain sufficient reserves in the long run, demonstrating financial sustainability. This budget also proposes a path to balance by 2028. Finally, our budget invests in our base operations and sustaining capital, meaning that our residents can be assured that we are maintaining the services that you have come to expect and protecting our city assets. Now, council, it's time to turn the floor over to you. It's your turn to discuss and deliberate. We've heard, we have heard throughout the sessions that there are some areas that you would like to discuss further, and we want to hear from you. In this part, we'll turn the floor over to council, and administration will be on standby to answer any questions or provide any clarification that is needed. As we look at this section, some of the questions that we have for council include: Did council receive sufficient value from these council committee of the whole meetings? And if required, is council intending to provide direction to administration at the next council meeting on November 18th? Or would council prefer a special council meeting prior to December 2nd? And with that, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Heimer. I don't see any hands up. So maybe if we can go back a slide, please? So the, if required, is there a direction to administration at the next meeting? I would imagine Councilman McGrogan is not here. He's not available to attend by Teams. I know he had indicated one of the points that he would, he had some input, and so I would imagine you can expect that. He didn't directly communicate that through me, but I did hear him say that at this, one of the meetings. So do we have any questions or comments? Okay, sorry, I didn't see your name there. Council Robbins.
That's all right. Thank you very much. Through the chair. I'll answer the first question easily, I think. Did I receive sufficient value from the four CCW meetings? Yes, I think I did. I think when you talk about the budget sort of being the narrative and the story, I think that these meetings helped me understand what the narrative was, and I think will help me make good decisions, good and informed decisions. So I think there was certainly value in them, and I liked that they were broken up into different departments, so I could just focus on one piece at a time. Putting them back together might be slightly more complicated than that, but I liked hearing about them individually, and I certainly appreciated the level of expertise to answer questions as we went. I do have questions, and I think my questions probably arise from the fact that we don't have a service-level inventory. So we've been given information that there's been cost-reduction measures, but I'm not sure if that affected service levels, or will I get that information? So are there things that the city does currently that, as a result of the budget sort of parameters that we put around or the fence posts we gave you that mean a reduction of service delivery? Because I think some of those service areas are going to be more sensitive or important to the community than others, and where we should chime in on them, not in an operational way, but in a, this is what we hear is important to the community kind of way. So it's a bit hard without knowing where those, you move one thing and another thing moves where those might be. And again, I don't want to get in operational issues, but I just want to have an understanding if there's a service that's currently offered that is sort of off the table as a result of the budget. It's not clear to me what that might be. Or a service that's added, it may not be clear to me on a department level what that might be.
Mr. Heimer.
Through the chair. To Council Robbins, thank you for the question. We're assured the budget that we're presenting to you today secures all of the same similar levels of service that residents have been able to access in the past. We're not proposing any reductions to the services that we have provided in the past. As far as the new items, in the briefing note, there is a detailed breakdown for each section on what those proposed increases would be, and I'd refer back to the June and July sessions as well. We did provide a business case compendium that went into those in more detail.
Council Robbins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Heimer. I'm gonna, Mayor Clark may have more to say about this. I feel like it's possible we received more detailed information in the past, but I think it's more, the detailed information has been separated from the narrative. So we, the last four meetings, we've just been talking about the story of the budget, but some of that detailed information we received in previous meetings. And if I'm wrong about that, please tell me I'm wrong about that. But that's my recollection when we were going into assumptions, and then the information we received in July, June and July was maybe at a more detailed level, and then this is moved up to look at the forest instead of standing in the trees. That's what it feels like to me, but again, I could be wrong about that.
City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you. Through the chair. And I think to Councilor Robbins' point, it is challenging from your seat to be at council and to say, we want these type of services, and then we as administration come forward and go, this is, we're implementing your strategic vision. So what, our challenge is where we as administration are, I would say, somewhat handcuffed, is that we do not have a inventory of service delivery, and that's something we're working on. So I guess we're just looking for tonight, what do you need to help you information-wise to move forward? And that's why we put these three questions forward. What do you need for information? Would you like another meeting? But if you do want another meeting, if you can tell us specifically what we need.
Yeah, I, yeah, I totally understand why that's necessary, because you could continue to think, what would they like to hear, what would they need to hear? But we really need to give you that detail. I feel like I've received lots of information. I think this, the answer to the question that the services currently provided are not altered by this budget. Then we had a lot of the growth opportunity and the sustaining capital, and we had a meeting about it, and then you went back and did further work on it. I'm not sure I fully understand the result of the work that you did. So I've seen it bubble up in different presentations. This was deferred, but we had a whole list before, and I'm not sure what happened with everything on the list, if it all got deferred, if some of it got struck, if some of it is proceeding. And again, I've seen it in bits and pieces, but with the table I had before, I think that, I don't want to speak for Councilman McGrogan either, but I know that he had some questions about specific items, and so whether they've continued or not is still an open question that I'd like to have answered.
Just before I recognize, Mayor Clark, I'm going to have Mr. Heimer respond.
Thank you for the question. With each one of the four meetings that we've had, in the briefing note, we have provided that same listing in the appendices of all the growth opportunities, including the ones that have been deferred for each of the areas. So I might refer back to that. We will do a full refresh when we come back on December 2nd. We'll put that business case compendium back together and provide that as a resource to you.
That would be great. I found it helpful to begin with, and now that we've had all of this discussion, I think it would help me to see it sort of, maybe it's just me, but in the same format, so I can compare it in my mind, would be helpful to me personally. I don't know about everyone else.
Mayor Clark, I see that you retracted your hand. Do you have any questions, or are you good for now?
Sorry, through the chair. Thank you, Councilor Duenowski. I put my hand down when you said I was next, so I apologize for the confusion. So there was some staffing information that I asked for in the last meeting, and then I do agree that it is better for us to have the information in the same format year-over-year so that we can actually do comparisons. And I, my feeling is that I haven't really gotten a sense of... So we don't really, we've never really had a listing of, you know, this is what the municipality is currently doing, other, under other strategic plans, like previous councils, that maybe this council doesn't want to continue, and then we could just, you, like, get rid of that program and start something at this council, or one of the things that might be off the list otherwise. So those two pieces of information, but also the details about, there's this city manager contingency fund, and there's an operational and capital. Like, we haven't really seen anything about that or about council's budget. So I, I just feel like more detail is better, and that includes us making the difficult choices of what do we want to stop providing or start providing? Some of them aren't even maybe services, but projects that we've been working on that maybe at this point in this council no longer really wants to do those things. So it's not service levels exactly, but like, what are the things we're doing and what things are important to this council? So I, again, the questions from the previous meeting, I would like that information and then just as described, a little more detail, quite a bit more detail in terms of the budget. And I would also agree that whilst I'm not super stoked about having another meeting before December 3rd, I'm not ready to decide on a budget. I don't feel like I have the information to decide on a budget at this moment in time, but perhaps, like, I understand that we don't necessarily have to pass a budget. We have, like, before the, before year-end, we've had this discussion previously in other years, that there's a provision in the MGA that allows for budgets to be passed in the next year and just carry over consistent funding. And also, there's that thing about the staffing that has been mentioned in the public that I, I don't see that in our budget or like that was our direction. So I would like more information about that as well.
Just before, so Mayor Clark, you're, you were breaking up quite a bit. I think we caught most of it. Just letting you know that in case you are in a spot where you can find a different space to occupy yourself if you have further questions. It was breaking up quite a bit, but I think we got the gist of what you said. City Manager Mitchell.
Thanks. Through the chair, and just for some clarification, Mayor Clark, you did mention this notice of motion that you did that were included on the May 6 council meeting. There were four items, and two were defeated and two were carried. And the two that were carried were brought forward to council. Director Koken of People's Services addressed those. So I'm just, would like some clarification on what additional information you would like.
So I asked for additional information at the last meeting that you said was actually provided to council already, and you said that you would forward it. And then the tapping with respect to council's comment in public that I don't think that we have discussed. And also, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, but I have looked up the date, the information you said that would be provided at the budget in my February 22nd, 2024.
I apologize. I could not hear any of that.
Yeah, Mayor Clark, you're breaking up quite badly. So maybe we'll, yeah, City Manager is asking if you could communicate that out to her and copy council through an email. You're breaking up, and it's quite hard to understand. I'm going to move over to Council Robbins.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Duenowski, through the chair. I didn't answer one question earlier, which is, I think, the critical question to me here, is do I think the budget reflects the strategic plan? And do I feel like the budget is better connected to the strategic plan than the previous budgets we reviewed? And the answer to me is yes, it is very much so. And I will also answer the question, do I want to have a meeting before December 2nd? I do not want to pass a budget in January. So if a meeting before December 2nd, where we could have the extra time maybe to look at the service delivery, to look at the comparison of those documents we received before, that would, that would probably help. Again, I am also loathe to have another meeting where we talk budget again, but if I was looking at those specific documents, as kind of like a narrow focus for me, because I think I have most of my questions answered, I just want to, you know, measure, my dad's a hard worker, I measure twice, cut once kind of thing. So I want to make sure that I, I just don't leave any stone unturned in my mind. But, so if there needs to be a special meeting prior to December 2nd, that would be fine with me if there's enough time between now and then to have that additional information. It sounds like it's already on the way, so I don't think that's going to be a problem, but if it is going to be a problem, then I, but I would be horrified, is too strong of a word, but I would be disappointed if we didn't pass a budget before the end of December. I think we've had ample time, and if we need additional information, I know that we can receive it if we just document it, which is, I think, what you're looking for now, is if we want something specific, document what that is in writing, and it'll be much easier to respond. Okay.
Councilor Sharps, I will recognize you momentarily. It's going to have the city manager respond.
Thank you. And through the chair, we just want to make sure that it's a collective decision of council, because that's how we roll, and we want to make sure that it's clear so that all the staff that have been bringing this forward, that we maximize our time effectively. What do you exactly need? Do you need another meeting? What do you need to see in order to give you some comfort of making a decision?
Thank you. Councilor Sharps.
Thank you, Councilor Duenowski, and through the chair. So I had two questions, one to Mr. Heimer. Just wanted to make sure that when I'm looking at my information, I'm going back to the council committee of the whole of July the 9th, and if I look at that budget sheet, that would be the most accurate and latest and greatest. Would that be accurate?
To Councilor Sharps, through the chair, are you referring specifically to information about the new growth opportunities?
Correct.
That document that was provided back then will be reflective of the recommended opportunities. However, if you do refer to the four briefing notes that we've put through from October through November, you'll see in some cases, there may be some items that were recommended that are now deferred, and we've tried to highlight those throughout the sessions as well. But that was part of the efforts to, as council had requested for us to go back to the drawing board, look for ways to reduce the burden on the taxpayer. So we did cut some of those things that we felt were lower on the collective priority list of administration, and those will be reflected in the briefing notes that we've put forward to date.
Perfect. So I guess my request or question would be... So I guess my request or question would be, since there has been, I think it's been three briefing notes or four briefing notes with amendments to the cap, the budget, the new growth opportunities, is it possible to get a revised package? So I held off on a lot of my questions because I wanted to hear everything before I made all my questions up. So I've got a running list, but I'm not prepared to ask them right now because I want to, it, it's hard to look at three different briefing notes and one, and three different documents. I'm wondering if we could get a synopsis of all the information on a fresh budget sheet to review. And I can throw my email, my questions out in email if that's preferential. We did that last year where Managing Director Eager posted all the questions from council. I'm not opposed to that, but it, like I've got so many emails and so many different council committees of the whole, it'd be nice to see what's the latest and greatest information and have a clear sheet in front of me, but that would be my request.
City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you. And through the chair to Counselor Sharps. I think that's the same thing, Counselor Sharps, that Counselor Robbins is asking for a consolidated list. And if that would be helpful, we can certainly do that. And I know what you mean, instead of having three documentations, it's easier just to look at everything. Here's the things we've cut. Here's the thing that we felt were important in our ranking system. And I think that's what you're looking for. Is that accurate?
I would say that's a fairly good summary. I think some of the, I went back to some of the budget deliberations and I specifically had asked some questions surrounding, um, the food waste plant and the regional, um, if we had a regional conversation and somebody was going to get back to us, and I don't see that. But I'm not saying I didn't miss it, but that's why I'm looking for a fresh synopsis so I can go over my original questions to this question.
Mr. Heimer.
Thank you for the question as well as the comment about the information regarding the food waste. That's exactly what we're looking for is to hear what you need. So we'll make sure that we answer those questions and get back to you on that. If there was something that was previously sent, we'll make sure to resend it. And with regard to the consolidation of information for the business cases or the new growth opportunities, it was our intention to consolidate that back together for the December 2nd meeting, but I think that we could likely expedite that if that's helpful.
My personal opinion through the chair, sorry, yes, it would be helpful. Yeah, I, you know what? I, I spent some time going back to various budget sessions and presentations and watched some live meetings. And, and I would have to agree with Mayor Clark, some of the items that we originally pushed for in our first and second year. And I don't think it's intentional that it, it's missing, but it's just a different format. But I think that when you look at it from two years ago to now, it looks like we're receiving less. And I don't think that's the intention that we're really receiving less. I think the intention is that we're actually supposed to be receiving more in a synopsis, but I don't know that comes across in the budget. But that's why I want to share with you. So if we can get the new information or the, I guess I'm not seeing it as compiled versus all the updated information. And then I would be happy to throw my questions back at you in writing, in open, whatever you need.
City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you through the chair. I have a suggestion just to help us if, if you decide to act upon it, is that because there's still some questions surrounding the budget, perhaps administration can go back, do the updated or consolidated or consolidated and updated list and get that to council as soon as humanly possible. But if council still feels a need for another meeting, perhaps we should set a special meeting now tentatively while everybody has time and that it's there if we need it. And if not, we can always cancel.
Okay, just moving forward, I did see the mayor did send out a message regarding clarity that we couldn't quite understand. So the information requested that she referenced earlier in the evening, she says is in the email dated February 22nd, 2024, information on city manager contingency funds, a more detailed budget, um, consistent with previous years. So just kind of wrapping up, I, I sense that we will require another meeting. It's not my decision to make, but I sense that I, I, my observation would be that we, we've come so far. I, I appreciate how it was compartmentalized and broken out and the narration of it was extraordinary. It really was. But I, you know, I will, I, where I will agree is that now what, what we saw initially to where after all these kind of storytelling, if you will, more than that clearly, but the narrative, it kind of going back to that, it gives us greater context, gives us, will give us a greater sense of the balancing that's going on. I wrote down here, I, I don't want to get granular. That's me. Granular is operational, but, but the big marbles that, that council can weigh in on as far as what's a priority vis a vis the next budget in relation to current, that might be our operational strength, it could be whatever. I mean, I, we don't want to get into, to the detail, but I think having a broad sense of that in some kind of synthesized document will be helpful. And I'll simplify by saying it's like when we at committee levels, when we make policy changes or otherwise, we have this, the original document and there are red lines put through it, or there are notes on it that show where the changes occurred from the current state or the initial state. And it just gives you a sense of where you were and what is being proposed, something like that in my, in my mind's eye would be helpful as well. So I don't see any other hands on the speaker list or online. Do you have some closing comments?
I just wanted to make mention to the package that we gave to council on October 1st and closed that, that did include a list of all of the changes that we have made to date.
Okay. Counselor Hirsch.
Well, and I, I just on that note, I just kind of put, I wrote and put homework underlined. So short of the, we don't have the consolidated. So I guess I don't know what timelines for me, I, the, the quicker I can get it in my hot little hands for me to kind of bring it all together for me to review will determine, quite frankly, if on November 18th, like if I, if I do my work and, and review it and whatever else and feel somewhat satisfied, then maybe, I don't know, we, we make a call to say if, if everyone wants to have the meeting and if, if that's going to be the case. I, I'm not a big fan of meeting for meeting's sake. So I think if people feel, I guess maybe that's my question to whoever wants to answer it, as far as the consolidation goes, and maybe now you're telling me like October, back to my point, is October 1st meeting the, where I should be reviewing all the changes? And that's that, I can't recall, I apologize. Is that the consolidation bit? Just help me understand. Like I'm trying to, just direct me where I'm going to get this consolidation and an understanding, so.
Yeah, so through, through the chair, first, I'd just like to mention that we've never provided a consolidated budget to council in the past. They've always come in separate pieces. So this year we are bringing everything together and our intention is on December 2nd, not only to bring together a consolidated budget, but to provide that in the context of a 10-year plan. So we will show you what that looks like on a cash level, on a debt level, on an operational level. So this year in this budget, I think we are going far beyond what we've done in previous years as far as information. Last year when we did the budget, we were looking at, council was asking for more time to deliberate and they were looking to see a clearer tie between their strategic priorities and the things that we were doing. So in this budget cycle, we tried to segregate out what is status quo from what is growth so that we could highlight all of the new investments that we're doing. So you can see the difference between what's needed to kind of manage the business and what is, what is added on to or what's going to grow. And so we've gone down to the detail of not just providing a project level and a project description, which is what you would have received in the previous budget cycle. But we've gone into the justification as well. And we've brought all the directors from across the city to answer any and all questions that have been posed by this council. We've tried to respond as well to requests that we heard during the July 15th regular council, requests for ways to cut the, the tax levels as well as more information about the big picture items like facilities for the future, some of the energy transition items. So we've tried to respond at, at every level that we could to the requests that were coming from council to provide that level of clarity. I think that the one item that if I'm trying to read between the lines of, of what was missing or what council's looking for that they haven't received in past, it's probably details on the sustaining capital, which is forthcoming. The intention with this year's is, is really to focus on, we're trying to, there's so many things to discuss and we've moved from seven hours now to over 22 hours, trying to deliberate and express what's in, what's in our budget. And we're trying to focus on the things that we think that council is interested in, the things that council, um, uh, needs to know, focusing on property taxes, utility rates, affordability, new investments in the city. And so that's kind of been our focus. It's not an intention to say we're not going to give that information or we're holding things back. It's really just trying to focus in on the things that we think are important to you. So if there's things that are missing that we can provide, we have all the detail. We can do that, absolutely.
So I, I absolutely appreciate the commentary. And I think what I found additional this time around was the narrative, the story and the background. And I appreciate a lot of times we don't always get the background. And I think that's where the, the heavy lifting and the hours were spent. Ultimately though, all roads lead back to looking at the decision items in terms of what made the cut, what didn't make the cut. And quite frankly, it might be saying, you know what, I saw that, um, you know, I believe, really believe XYZ initiative that costs $500,000 should be put into the budget because it met this strat plan of our, of our growth. So I appreciate the narrative piece and I think what I'm hearing from different council members is thank you for that, the background for sure, 22 hours and we were all here. It, the, the challenge now is we always have to now go back and hone in on, okay, thank you for the background. Now let's go back to where we're at, back to the original discussion on sustaining growth and say, do I agree with this? I don't agree with this, et cetera. So I think in some ways, we don't want to be kind of led down the path to say, okay, well, here we are, like we're 5.6, you guys made a great case and it sounds good, let's move forward. I think for us on the governance side, it's do we accept the position that administration put towards us in terms of what their recommendations are? And do we debate, have that discussion in terms of what stays in, what comes out, that sort of thing? And I don't think to the point of Counselor Dumanowski to get to that granular, but if there's something that as counselors that they want to be passionate about that really might affect the tax or whatever, they have to make that case, get the lobby, get the five votes and, and off we go. But I think that's where our domain, domain is, is to kind of have that debate. And then for me to feel comfortable enough to, to have that based on the information provided. So if that makes some sense, and I guess, you know, you mentioned, you know, we don't consolidate, but somehow, some way, I remember seeing budget lines that, oh yeah, we made a decision on the Crestwood Rec Center, there's the line item. Oh yeah, we made that decision and that was half a percent here. And I remember those conversations. So I don't, I guess my point is, is I don't know, maybe that's the piece that's missing. Do you know what I mean? So.
Managing Director Eager.
Just listening to the conversation through the chair and further to city managers' suggestion, all the information that you have is somewhere out there about, I, I think what we can do is help create the link or create the, 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 the location for that. And what I would suggest, and we've heard a few things here, probably five things here of, of questions, where was that information again? And i- is that the most recent or was that amended? And, and so we can help you orientate back to what was already presented and give you a link to, to that. And I think that would be in advance to when we're meeting again, would at least give you the opportunity to refresh and look back and, and see what you have. And if there's any questions, just to respond back to us with those questions. So that's what I would recommend. What we're, what we're putting together right now for December 2nd is a complete package. To have that complete package ready in advance, like several weeks in advance is not possible just because of the work related to it, but we can get something out to you fairly quickly that will help, I think, what you're asking for.
Counselor Robbins and then Van Dyke.
Sorry, I keep chiming in here, but, um, so the October 1st information showed us what was cut, but it didn't show it in comparison to what stayed. So we had a list of all of the items and then you went back and did the work and, and took some of those growth and sustaining capital matters off. But I, it's not without comparing them side by side and they were a little tiny print, figuring out which ones stayed. So what growth is continuing, what you're recommending and what sustaining capital is continuing, it, so I could, I can see the removals. And there were some like small adjustments too, as I recall, it was like, like maybe a grant was, the budget changed because there's a grant for an item that we didn't know we were going to get a grant for, things like that. So I remember what you're talking about, but I, I never, I think maybe, um, had enough information, but said, these are the ones we dropped, these are the ones we continue. To be fair to you, we only asked you, what did you drop? So we didn't ask you what will continue, but I think that there will be some council questions about what those items are and sort of how they were prioritized and how they relate back to the strategic plan. So that's my observation of October 1st is you're right, it did contain, here's all the things we're taking off, but it didn't tell me which ones were. So I'd have to go back to the June or July one to match them up. So it, whatever you can do to simplify it, it would be much appreciated.
The information you're looking for, it was in each one of the briefing notes between October 22nd and now, but we will consolidate that for you yet.
Sounds like a consolidation is in order, but thank you for that. Counselor Van Dyke.
Yes, thank you through the chair. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I haven't made any significant comments, so I just wanted to put in my two cents was that in regards to the line items. So I think for myself, my fear would be that somehow, given the history that we've heard and experienced during our term, that we would somehow be approving the closure of a rec facility. I mean, we saw that happen with, with Crestwood and, and the Moose. Or conversely, be approving a project that when we're out in the community, someone would come up to us and, and I mean, I, I can't think of what it could be some outlandish, like frivolous sort of thing, but you know, people are having a hard time buying groceries and that someone would come to us and say, can you, I can't believe that you guys approved this, you know, like, you know, like as I said before, dessert instead of the main course, right? When people are struggling. So I think just the, the assurance we're looking for is that we're not removing essential services to people that they, because that has happened, or approving things that just are not reasonable given this, the current culture of, of our community. So that would be my, my two cents. Thanks.
Mr. Heimer.
Thank you through the chair to Counselor Van Dyke. So in this budget, what we're communicating is that we will maintain the current service levels that we have in the past. And then the new growth opportunities, which we presented in June and July, and there were some amendments, but were then presented as an appendix to the briefing notes from October until now, that those items will be the new things that we're proposing as a part of this budget. And for the ease and of, of review, we will consolidate that and bring it back to you so that you can see. But rest assured that we're not, we're not proposing the closure of any facilities or, or anything, status quo minus the, the new growth opportunities.
All right. So the only, going back to your conclusion slide here, are we going to look to add an additional meeting and then cancel if needed? Or are we going to do a wait and see? There's some danger in doing that because trying to get nine people and staff at a predetermined date and time is. and staff at a predetermined date and time is, can be challenging unless it's already in the calendar. So I, I'm not sure how to proceed, other than to surmise that there might be need to, to pre-plan for another date and time, if and when that proves necessary. Would, can we have any agreement around the table on that? Or? Why don't we, why don't we go through the, actually, there's nothing, nothing ventured, nothing gained by, by, everything to be gained, quite frankly. We're putting another date and time in play, just in case we need it. But I, to councillor Hirsch's point, if we get all that information, it could be that our questions are individually or collectively answered and, and clearer, so that we can go to that meeting, ready to give the final feedback and direction to it.
Through, through the chair, if I might ask, if, if there have been, are, are things that you're looking for, questions that you have prior to that meeting, if you haven't expressed them already, to let us know, so that we can prepare and make the most effective use of that time?
Yeah. So those questions would go through the city manager, just to remind council of that. And I would imagine there'll be broad consensus around what those questions are. I suppose if they were very unique in nature, then, then the city manager would ask for council as a whole's concurrence to do a deeper dive and, and make that desired outcome come to the, to a future meeting at some point. All right. I don't see any other, oh, I do. Councillor Sharps.
I totally forgot what I was going to ask. Sorry.
That happens to me all the time. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So councillor Van Dyke.
I'll make a motion to go into closed. Oh, are we? Sorry.
Well, I think we'll have to do that outside it. Yeah, we'll have to do a poll of some kind. But, okay, so we have a motion to go into closed. We need a second. Councillor Heider. And let's vote. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, yes.
Is that a different link?
The mayor voted affirmative.
Yes.
So did I.
Councillor Sharps, and you heard her? Okay, I believe, I, I just, everyone's voice came at the same time. So I think all three online are.
Councillor Dumunowski?
Yes.
Sorry, it's councillor Knodel. Can I just have Steph or another councillor send me an email to the closed link as well, please?
That's what I just asked for as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's noted. So we'll do that here momentarily. So it is yes all across the board. So we are adjourned. I did vote from here.